Hello everybody, welcome and thank you for attending this Transport Regeneration and Climate Policy Committee. The meeting is open to members of the public, good to see so many here. It's also being webcast and livestreamed this morning. I've introduced myself, I'm councillor Marderick, co-chair of the Transport Regeneration Policy Committee. I'm going to ask the politicians around the room to introduce themselves and then officers will introduce themselves when it comes to their items. So if we could start with councillor Diane Hurst please.
Can most certainly chair, my name's Diane Hurst and I'm a councillor for Richmond Ward.
I'm Christine Gilligan-Cubo, I'm a councillor for Hillsborough Ward and I'm also deputy chair of this committee.
Councillor Ruth Ruff, Mr Richard Shaw.
Hi, my name's Craig Gambleview, I'm councillor for East Applefield Ward.
Councillor Richard Shaw, councillor for Beecham Greenhall Ward.
Andrew Sanger, I'm councillor for Fullwood Ward, I'm group spokesperson on the TRC Committee.
Councillor Ian Auckland, I'm councillor for Graves Park Ward.
Thank you for that. Just for members of the public, we've received four petitions today and 10 questions from 10 different questioners from members of the public, but not everybody's here to ask their questions. So going to the petition first, Swift Bricks, Nicola Gilbert, I've got that.
Yeah. Yeah.
There's a petition first, if we could take the petition and then ask them to the questions.
Sorry Chair, you leapt a bit further than I thought you were going to do. It's just, I have an interest to declare, which is a personal interest together with the other councillor Auckland, I have joint membership of the RSPB, I'm a passive member, I take no active part, which is annoying for the activist members, we all know this from our political lives, that we often puzzle at this, but I'm a passive member, so it won't, it's a personal interest, it won't affect my contribution to the issue.
Thank you councillor Auckland, I should have gone through the agenda, which I asked for apologies for absence and thank you. So we've had apologies from councillor Ruth Missour and we've got councillor Ruff subbing and we've had an apology from councillor Grokot as well. Councillor Sanger, did you want to come in?
No, just to check that we're going through the agenda and not jumping to item six first, but as long as we're going through the agenda, that's fine, thanks Chair.
Right, over to you.
I'm Flora Jeffs-Ardy, representing Sheffield Swift Network today. We trust that you've read our petition, there are many environmental problems that we cannot solve, but we can make a difference to the wonderful, amazing birds, our Swifts. They've been on earth for 72 million years and they'll be extinct in 30 if we don't provide permanent nesting opportunities now. Swifts have declined by 60% since 1997, they are awesome birds that eat, sleep, drink and mate on the wing and are in critical danger. The main cause of their decline is nest destruction. For Swifts, this means the holes in houses that they use are being blocked by the modern building practice of fitting soffits and fascias. This year, despite our pleas, a long-established colony in Totley had plastic soffits installed perfectly legally out of nesting season, blocking historic nesting sites in the eaves of a home. The precious breeding adults returned from Central Africa after an exhausting 6,000-km journey to find their nests lost forever. The local Swift group in Crooks had better luck, active nests were illegally blocked by scaffolding during nesting time, the work was delayed and the Swifts were saved. In June, a large colony was threatened by a re-roofing scheme in Hansworth, we watched the Swifts continuously crashing into scaffolding, trying to enter three blocked nests during nesting season, but we were able to halt much of the work. Once the scaffolding was down, after they nested, we witnessed, so while they were nesting, we witnessed the Swifts fly back to their original nests. They don't give up, many will break their wings and die trying to enter their imprinted nests. This is happening all over the country without being noticed. We've worked with Sky House at Utter Bridge Mill to install 50 permanent Swift bricks, as is happening across the country. There are many brands for all situations and surfaces, it is contained within the building for life, maintenance-free, weatherproof, cheap and easy to install. They are as unnoticeable as an air brick, but their importance is unquestionable to the survival of these birds. We still have pockets of Swift colonies clinging on in Sheffield, but these are vulnerable, no holes, no nests, no chicks, no Swifts. Thank you for listening.
Thank you Nicola for that passionate speech, if I can call it that, and thank you for bringing the examples as well. I've got a technical response from our offices, as you're aware, we've been working on the draft local plan for a number of years, it's now come to its final stage, if I can say that. It will be going out for, it'll be coming to full council in December and then it goes out for consultation in the new year, but policy GS5 in the draft local plan, development and biodiversity includes a clause, part one, that requires development to incorporate design features that enhance biodiversity. In the definition section of the policy, we indicate that this could include, for example, green roofs, bird and bat boxes, hedgehog holes in walls and fences, water features, planting native or wildlife-attracting trees, shirubs, wildflowers etc. In response to your petition, we would suggest adding Swift Bricks to the list of examples. This will be proposed as an amendment to the draft local plan in the report to full council on the 14th of December, so that demonstrates the prominence we're giving this and like many other towns and cities, we've also signed up to the climate emergency, so I welcome the position that we've taken. So we also recognise that the provision of nests is an important factor in helping to boost Swift numbers, but we do not feel that would be appropriate to include a specific policy solely on Swift Bricks in the local plan, because it would involve a level of detail that goes beyond what is appropriate in a statutory development plan. A case could be made for having policies on the creation of habitats for a number of endangered species, so we feel the appropriate approach is to have a general policy that requires inclusion of appropriate design features. This means the approach to biodiversity design features can be tailored on a site-by-site basis. Whilst we acknowledge that other local authorities have included specific policy on Swift Bricks, we are mindful of government advice to avoid overly long plans. Due to the complexity of the planning issues, number of development sites in Sheffield, the Sheffield Plan is already lengthy. In due course, we intend to produce a supplementary planning document on planning for biodiversity. This will provide further guidance for developers on how biodiversity net gain requirements will be applied in Sheffield, but we envisage it will also include more detailed advice on biodiversity design features, including for example Swift Bricks. And I know we've got Will Stewart, the director, is also responsible for planning, we've just had a quick conversation with him. When we go out for consultation, we could do something on biodiversity theme as part of the consultation when we go out, so I hope you'd welcome that. I don't know if there's anything you'd like to add, Will?
Just to say, I think we recognise, you know, the strength of feeling around the petition and we are going to be including Swift Bricks as one of the examples of proper biodiversity planning within the plan, but as Chair has said, I think, I would certainly welcome a more detailed theme around biodiversity as part of public consultation in January. So I will speak with officers and we'll organise that as part of the consultation, but as we've said as well, I think further detailed supplementary planning policy could include Swift Bricks and that's probably the place to do it, where we can be very, very clear about what design requirements we require of the development industry in Sheffield and make sure that Swift Bricks are included.
May I briefly respond?
Yeah, we don't usually, but...
Yeah, I'll be very brief, you've given us a great deal of technical information there, thank you very much. I think, we'd like the opportunity just to further digest what you're saying there and I hear that you're going to open a consultation. It sounded to me like we're sort of halfway there. Me and my colleagues, expert colleagues up in the gallery there, I don't know if they've got anything they might need to immediately say to the response.
We don't usually allow it...
No, if they don't, that's fine.
But I'm going to make an exception, because you've come for a purpose and for me it's important to allow you to speak, so yeah, if you want to go to the mic.
Do you want to introduce yourself? Oh sorry, my name's Melanie Savas, thank you. I'm from Sheffield Swift Network and Essex Swifts. I think I probably speak on behalf of everyone here, that we're kind of encouraged in what you're saying, there was a couple of mixed messages there, but we are encouraged and I think we would like to see and hear, you know, more detail on that and yeah, I think that's what... Yeah, we'd really like to work with you as well, you know, we've got a lot of experience here, so if that's something that you would consider when you're doing the consultations and talking about this, you know, we're here, we're the Sheffield Swift Network, we've got a lot of, you know, people here that know a lot about this and we've worked with builders. I personally have worked with Sky House to actually put the bricks in, so there's a lot of people, probably including Sky House, that could probably help you with this as well.
Brilliant, thank you for that. As I said, the commitment we're giving is, we've got the draft plan coming to full council, so we take on board what you've said and the comments of including this as an example in the local plan. And when the consultation starts, happy to have a biodiversity theme, as I've said in my response to your colleague's petition, and happy to have that regular dialogue with our committee as well. So I know my colleague councillor Diane Hurst, she has two hats and I think she's second hand.
It's not with a planning hat Chair, I just wanted to really second the proposal that I think it's important to include at this stage in the strategic plan, Swift Bricks as an example, because it gives some clarity as we're doing the consultation, but also to welcome what's been said actually, or what I was going to say was, if we're going to have a biodiversity theme, sorry, my teeth aren't in properly this morning, if we're going to have a biodiversity theme when we're doing consultation on the draft plan, if we've got petitioner's details and could we not work with them and other biodiversity groups just to help design that, that part of the consultation?
Yeah, definitely.
Thanks Chair, so I think there's probably three things, I think the first thing is, we're saying we're going to amend the policy in the draft local plan to include Swift Bricks as an example of design features that support biodiversity, that's the first thing. I think the second thing is, when we get to public consultation in January, we will have a biodiversity theme where we'll be reaching out to your organisation and others to fully understand key points and make sure that we are properly consulting on that element. And then I think the third item and the one where, you know, an ongoing relationship would be good, is where we're developing a specific policy that sits on the local plan, which can get into a lot more technical detail. I think as Chair read out there, local plan needs to be a strategic document to cover a wide variety of issues, so it's not really the place to go into reams and reams of technical detail, but there is an opportunity to explore Swift Bricks and other measures further as part of supplementary planning guidance. And when that comes forward, we will of course make sure that we're speaking to you and your organisation and others around biodiversity. So I think there are three elements there Chair.
Thank you for that, Will. Mel, did you want to, sorry Nicola, did you want to come back in?
I just wanted to make one final point that is incredibly important for Swifts, they are entirely unique birds, regular nesting provision is not suitable for them, so you know, they do need to be treated as a single species and that is critical. Thank you very much for that.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you Chair, if it's any reassurance, the answer that the Chair has read out and that the officer responds, sadly or not, it is the sort of answer I would have supported, I think it is the right approach to the overall plan and to make representation, so if it sounds a bit glass half full, I don't think, I don't detect an intention round this table for it to be glass half full. The only point is that we were sent some examples of where specific policies had been included in local plans and I don't know whether somebody will have a chance to just look into how specific you could be if you wanted to be, because in the jargon of planning, how sound these sorts of policies is, that sort of quite specific policy might be. It would be interesting to know to help inform a discussion later on. And the other point I'd make is, having the hat of a cabinet minister, a cabinet member responsible for planning and sitting on planning committees, is it's the point of decision that matters, it's when the planning applications come in and you're sitting there and considering the conditions that are put in and when you're on a planning committee, we all get some training and we get some refresher training now and again and so, you know, particularly these are the sorts of areas that we ought to be focusing on and if the reports don't contain appropriate conditions, members hopefully will be wanting to see it in there.
Thank you for that councillor Auckland. Councillor Sanger?
Yeah, thanks Chair and big thanks to the petitioners, I mean, bringing a really important issue which sort of drives home to us, the biodiversity challenge as much as the climate challenge and that Swifts are clearly in big decline and they're not the only, they're not the only species, but I think there are species which we can do something specifically about. Clearly we have a members' working group on Monday to discuss amendments to the local plan going to full council, so I do think the specific point that you and your response and Will Stewart said, that in terms of the specific example of Swift boxes, of Swift Bricks should be included, I do think then for amendments so that we can agree that at full council. I think then, as we say, we're then out for public consultation and we're out to do a more detailed piece of work in terms of supplementary planning guidance that fits below the local plan and we clearly need to, you know, have due regard to this petition and we need to change, you know, be much more proactive in terms of Swift Bricks and Swift Boxes, so I would hope we can push for that in terms of supplementary planning guidance that will go out to developers and then the planning members will discuss and you know, having been a planning board member, really pleased that you used the example of Utter Bridge Mill where the group has worked with the developers and it will make a difference to the Swift population of that area. So I think, really welcome the petition, glad that we're able to, you know, put something in as an example, but then we would need to work with this, with the petitioners in terms of getting the supplementary planning guidance as strong as it can be, so there's a future for Swifts in this city for the next century or so, and going forwards, thank you Chair.
Councillor Shaw?
Thanks Chair, I'll be very quick, of course I, you know, I welcome the petition and I'm glad that the, you know, Swift Bricks are being, going to be added to the list of examples, but the point is just, I hope that whatever, whatever the plan says or whatever the supplementary guidance says, provides, you know, proper oversight of the measures that developers put in, so that they don't all, for example, just pick one of the single examples off the list and we end up with, yeah, millions of hedgehog holes but no Swift Bricks at all. Thanks Chair.
You're welcome. Usually for members of the public, it's usually question or the petition is spoken to, the Chair usually responds and that is it, but because the nature of the petition, I thought it's important I give colleagues an opportunity to also respond, so can I thank you ever so much for coming this morning and hopefully start a relationship to ensure that the biodiversity Sheffield flourishes, so once again, thank you for coming in. So the next person is a petitioner from Jane Mason. Starting second, just let the members of the public leave, so then you're not hearing noises and being put off. Thanks for coming in Jane and thank you for your patience, so over to you.
I'm Jane, I'm the coordinator for the neighbourhood watch in the S12 postal area.
I'm Karen Britton, I'm one of the parent governors and a parent at Berlisbar Primary Community Academy. So we're here for the position of, for a pedestrian crossing on Berlisbar Lane due to a young lad from our school being knocked over a few months ago. So at the top end of Berlisbar Lane, located in the S12, so there's two primary schools, obviously you've got Berlisbar Primary and you've got St John Fisher, there's also a row of shops, the post office and it's quite a well-known residential area. Historically, there's been a crossing patrol ward in situates on Berlisbar Lane, on the raised area, which we are aware is called a speed table. There is also blister pavements on either side of the area highlighting this for the visually impaired and other pedestrians use it as a crossing point. This is the only crossing point on the stretch of road that can access for prams, wheelchairs and it's a drop curb, so it's the main access for both the schools, neither of which are suitable for either of the schools, because obviously it's classed as not a recognised crossing, so unfortunately, you know, you do get a lot of children that are crossing the road, hence the reason why somebody did get knocked over a few months ago, because there's no stopping. There's limited signage in the area to highlight that there are schools in the area and they are a little bit outdated, because I've given some packs to sell some further information and obviously, yes, there did used to be a lollipop lady, well obviously not called a lollipop lady, but there hasn't been one there for four years. So the actual signage actually says patrol, rather than highlighting that there is actually schools and children crossing. So obviously we haven't had a lollipop lady for four years now, but the vacancy is still open and has been for quite some time, so obviously it is a main heavy bus route for the 120 bus route and obviously one of the main routes up and down from Berlinmore Road down to Crystal Peaks as well. So what we're trying to propose is that we would like a zebra crossing put in place, because obviously the vacancy hasn't been filled yet, so, but obviously we are aware that they're being placed on a master, it's being placed on a master list due to budgeting, which is fine, but what we'd like to try and do is try and work out a lower cost budgeting to corroborate, obviously, if it's possible to corroborate our findings that we've done, so to gather data, like sort of for speeding, because it is, people do speed up and down that road. Obviously when that little boy got knocked over, the lady was actually doing more than 30 mile an hour on that road, so...
We want him to make it so that it's highlighted to drivers, especially drivers that aren't familiar with the area, that it is a crossing point, so obviously on a zebra crossing you have the beacons, but in the meantime, if we can do some safety measures that would just make it safer for the children. So the side roads, which the schools are located on are 20 miles per hour zones, but Berlisbar, but Berlisbar Lane up to those areas is a 30, they very rarely adhere to that, they do go faster than that, but if from Occupation Lane to Diet Vale Avenue, which covers the schools, if that could be made into a 20 mile per hour zone, so that it's the same as the side roads, that may help. The signs need changing to say that it's no longer a patrolled area, drivers may see those signs saying patrol and be looking out for a crossing lady, but there's not actually one there, children are running into the road, so if we can have some form of signage that does say that there are two schools nearby. I was actually nearly run over on there a couple of months back and I'd already started crossing the road, a bus came flying down and I actually went into the bus stop when it pulled in and I said, what are you doing, you've just nearly, you know, knocked me over and he was like, well you shouldn't be crossing there, it's not a crossing point. But as far as we're aware, when we've done this research, that a speed table means that that is a crossing point, but when the speed table was put in, it didn't warrant more higher measures like a zebra crossing, but I don't think a lot of road users are aware that that is a crossing point that people use, not just for school, the elderly use it, I myself am a disabled and use a mobility scooter, that is the only crossing point that I can get across, but sometimes you can be waiting five, 10 minutes to get across that road. We have included an impact statement from the little boy's mum and the little boy and the school are also on board, Berlisbar Academy, they'd like to get more involved in having some form of safety measures put in and they've also included a statement from their children and they've all signed it. Yes, so thank you.
Thanks very much for coming in, yeah, I've just seen the signatures, I'll pass it round so my colleagues can have a look as well. Thank you once again for coming in and for presenting the petition, what I can, I know, Jane, you've been in touch with the Transport Department, I understand you've had a response from one of our officers, John Priestley. The response I've got here is that it's going to go with the other requests and we'll come out, but there's two things I'd like to pick up, one is the school streets, we have a, I know we're looking at how we accelerate school streets, so it'd be good to see where this fits within there. There's also a vacancy with the school crossings, so it'd be good to understand, I'll probably have an answer for you today, but we can write to you and let you know if we're going to, how long, because I've no idea how long it's been vacant and it's important, if we've got two primary schools there, we try and fill that vacancy, so we'll come back to you. And the third thing is, obviously we'll inform your ward councillors as well and they might want to arrange a visit up there to come up and I'd be more than happy to come along with your local ward councillors as well, so, I mean, we get requests, so this is to manage your expectation as well, we get requests from across the city, very similar to the issues that you've raised and we have a system that we use, so can't work outside the system. system. But what we can do is come along and look at what we can do to, to make it safer because, uh, a, a number of my colleagues have heard me say this, outside London, Sheffield's probably one of the worst cities where we have accidents and fatalities amongst a not a 15-year-old, so that's an embarrassing fact for us as a city. And here we've got, uh, children as well asking for us to make that place safer. So, uh, the commitment we can give, give is that it will be assessed, but more than happy to come out with your ward councillors and look at what we can do collectively. I hope that's, uh, okay for you.
Can I just say, there are 26 vacancies at the moment on the council website for crossing patrol wardens. It is a really hard vacancy to fill and it has, the one for Berlisbar has been four years plus because the lady went on maternity leave and her daughter has now started full-time school.
And because of the nature of the job, it has been difficult. Uh, I've been a councillor for 15, 16 years and I know it's always, uh, challenging to try and fill these vacancies. I don't know, we've got the head of transport here who's just sat alongside, I don't usually do this, but because you've come in, I think it's important. Is there something you, you'd like to add, Tom?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Um, you, you're absolutely right. They are challenging roles to recruit to primarily because of the, the nature and the pattern of the hours that are worked, um, given it's, it's in the morning and then long gaps till the afternoon. And those periods are relatively short, so we, we do appreciate the, the challenges around that. We are continuing to try and advertise wherever possible. A lot of the time we do find that kind of working with the schools themselves to try and promote those vacancies, um, it is, is a, is, can be successful, but yet more than happy to be involved in any further discussions on this. The council's road safety fund is looking at, at rolling out a range of advisory 20 mile per hour speed limits near schools. Um, that's something that's in our programme at the moment, so there, there may well be, um, things that, you know, if we're meeting on site, that we can discuss in terms of that location.
Thank you so much, Tom. Once again, thanks for coming in. Go on, councillor, if you wanted to come.
Yeah, sorry, just a quick question to, uh, Tom actually, um, just, just in regards to filling, filling in this vacancy, I don't know whether you know much about them, but i- is it, is it an issue with cost or is it an issue with the amount of hours that are available with these, with these vacancies?
So it's, it's something that we've discussed recently and, and there's been other inquiries and other, obviously schools are affected with some of the vacancies, again, some of which are long-term. Um, but we don't think it is just an issue around kind of the, the, the wages that are applied and the salary for the roles. Um, it, it is that kind of working lifestyle pattern where there is an early morning start over, you know, a relatively short period of time, I'm talking around kind of probably three quarters of an hour, and then again in the afternoon, a short period. So it's, it's, the, the role has to fit with people's lifestyles and that's the challenging part. We often fi- find that, you know, it's, it's family members in the past where, you know, maybe grandparents where their children have been at a school and they've been involved and, uh, you know, taken on one of these roles and have done it for a period of time but then retire. So that's, it, it, that's the nature of the role and that's why it is challenging, unfortunately.
Thank you for that. Thanks ever so much. And the next petitioner is Samantha Nicholson. Over to you.
Hi, I'm Samantha Nicholson. I'm here today to present a petition on behalf of the Rubelane Estate. So since the creation of Rubelane Housing Estate, the bollards between Redwood Lane and Westfield Crescent whilst preventing cars from cutting through the estate has failed to prevent off-road bikes from using the estate as a rap run, which has often led to off-road bikes and illegal bikers tearing through the estate day and night. So Miller Homes have refused to carry out any further work. So I'm presenting the petition today on behalf of the residents and asking for the council to relook at the design of these bollards so that off-road bikers can't get through. And also if I could just add that the bollards really aren't fit for purpose. They were, as far as my way initially put in, to allow emergency services through, but they're actually padlocked down, so they're not automatic either. Just add that on.
Thank you for that, Samantha. That's quite surprising to allow that to happen. Uh, the response I've got here says the current site layout can be seen in the attached photos, which I've seen. Uh, we're dealing with six bollards that block the highway, narrowing the footpaths on each side. The four in the highway are removable. This is to allow access for, as you've said, for emergency services and maintenance vehicles. I mean, if there was an emergency, I'd, I'd like to understand who'd run out and, because if they're padlocked, not automatic, it'd be good to understand how emergency services had access to. I'm not looking for a response now, but, uh, if we can respond back to Sam, because I, I mean, we'd like to understand how that works. Uh, if we provide another bollard on the pavement to the left, the estate, from what I understand is the estate is not, uh, yet adopted, which causes, uh, issues, uh, for the highways department. And adoption from what I'm told is, uh, likely to be months away. The council would not consider any works while the estate is unadopted. We've also, uh, notified local councillors and Clive Betts that even when adopted, there's no easy solution here. Bollards need to have a minimum gap to allow legitimate users access the area, push chairs, cycle mobility scooters, et cetera. So, uh, I mean, I'm just looking at, at transport offices, uh, Tom. I mean, it says emergency vehicles access and if it's padlocked, I'd like to understand what would, what would happen there because that seems it's unsafe. Would there be a different route? I'm not familiar with the area, so happy to, to come up, uh, Samantha, to, to have a look and, uh, see what the, the issue is. So if you wanna come in, Tom?
Thank you, Chair. So, uh, usually where, um, padlocks are used on removable bollards to facilitate emergency vehicles, we use a padlock that has a, a standard key that the emergency services are able to unlock. Um, I, I will take this back and have a discussion with our Highway Development Control colleagues who've obviously been liaising through this through the planning process in terms of some of the design. The challenge will be those points around the design in that, um, we do need to keep routes open for, 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 for all users. Um, and where the design of barriers is required or proposed, we do need to make sure that they are, um, accessible for people in, in wheelchairs, in, in mobility scooters, which obviously does limit in terms of the, um, prevention for some of the, uh, motorised users that we may not want, uh, to access into those areas. In general, we're trying to reduce down, you know, barriers to, to the movement of people, um, but there are, can, can be these antisocial behaviour issues that do arise. Um, but I'm more than happy to, to raise that with, with colleagues in Highway Development Control and, and see what the position is, given that the, the, the site is not yet part of the adopted highway network.
Is a, an antisocial behaviour issue with off-road bikers? We could also speak to South Yorkshire Police. They, they, they do now have a team that addresses some of these issues, so, uh, hopefully answers some of the points, but we'll get you a fuller response if that's okay, Samantha.
Yeah, that's fine. I appreciate your time today and I look forward to hearing back from you.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
I have a number of petitions, but people aren't here. So I've got a petition from Sam regarding Crooks and Walkley Safe Streets, so we'll provide a written response to Sam. Uh, we've also had a number of questions. Uh, I've got a question here from Emily Griffiths, who's a Crooks resident who isn't attending. So I don't intend to read out, uh, the, the questions. Uh, we'll provide a written response to, uh, Emily. And then we've got a question from Jennifer Carpenter. Hi, Jen. Would you like to come over?
Thank you, Chair. I'm asking this question on behalf of South Yorkshire Climate Alliance. The Sheffield City Council Governance Committee report dated the 22nd of February 2022 on the committee system structure recommended in section 6.2 that committees adopt an engagement toolkit to enhance public engagement, participation and communications. Excuse me, I've got a rather heavy cold. With this experience in mind and in view of the high level of public engagement that will be necessary to successfully implement the decarbonisation route maps, will this committee undertake to implement the engagement toolkit in respect of the route maps with immediate effect? This would aid its own objectives with the route maps and would provide valuable learning for all the other, um, Sheffield City Council policy committees. I think this is very germane in terms of where you are with the route maps as well, so you may want to discuss this in more detail when you get to that item on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you for, uh, the question, Jennifer. Uh, the response is we agree that public engagement will be crucial to the delivery of the decarbonisation route maps. The approach to engagement is discussed within the body of the report, which has been presented today. The council is, the council's current approach is to use the Local Government Association's new conversations guide, which is the industry standard for local government. The Sustainability and Climate Team received training from Involve as part of their local climate engagement programme and also will be using the framework and resources this has provided to deliver the best possible engagement within the available resources. But like you say, we, it's an item on the agenda. You're more than welcome to stay in, uh, here, uh, as can be said. And I, uh, I've been off ill for a couple of weeks, but I understand we had a fantastic event at St Mary's, uh, not so long ago, which was really well attended, I think. Uh, you, your organisation was also present, so thanks for coming in. And, uh, I'll move on to the next question. Got a question from Ibra Hussein, who's not here, so we'll provide a, a written response to Ibra. Also got a question from Martin Gorman, uh, on behalf of Friends of the Sheffield Castle. He's not coming in, so we'll provide a written response. And then I've got a question from Anthony Wood.
Um, there's actually a series of questions that I submitted and were apparently approved. Um, but I'll start with, um, so it's all regarding, uh, item 10, uh, item 12, sorry, on the agenda today. So it's all regarding the Castle Gate development site. Um, so I'll start with, uh, firstly, in recommendation D, which is note that the resources identified in the gateway to Sheffield Luff bid for the creation of development plots will be used in the first instance to make good, two buildings on the castle site. We've been informed at a consultation event that the two buildings, um, referenced are the Mudford Building and Market Tavern, both of which are currently outside the defined envelope for the Luff funding and not a permissible use of this money. We'd like confirmation that the money currently being spent on the Market Tavern is not being drawn from the Luff Fund and that no money will be drawn from it until approved by the Department of Levelling Up for any works outside the permitted envelope as this risks causing issues with the entire fund. So that's the first point. I don't know if you want to have anyone address it or you want me to go straight on?
Please carry on, Anthony, and I'll respond.
Okay. Second point. Uh, could we have confirmation on exactly what recommendation E is? What the financial implications are and why this doesn't get explained in the report? This is note the exempt appendix to and authorised officers to seek approval from the Department for levelling up homes and communities to relocate an element of the project to the castle site. Item three, could the council please confirm that there will be no reduction in the funds for the public realm, decoverting, including renaturalisation and fist passage and archaeology as a result of diverting resources to the Market Tavern and Mudford Buildings? Can the relevant figures in appendix two be shared with us to substantiate this? Point four, could the council also confirm whether discussions have been held with the Frehewett Irritarian Restaurant and Andaluce Community Centre, who currently occupy the Mudford Building, and what the outcome of these discussions were? Uh, and finally, item five, could the council also confirm whether the Market Tavern and/or the Mudford Building have been approved, have been offered to S1 Arts? If so, why is this not in the report and why would the other community, why were other communities or arts projects such as those already in occupation in Castle Gate not also given an opportunity to bid for them as council disposal policy would normally require? That's my full set. Thanks.
Any further questions, Anthony? On your first one, the works are being funded revenue, uh, from the council's revenue budget and not from the, the Luff Fund, so that's, uh, a response to item, uh, question one. Uh, response to question two, the information on appendix two is commercially sensitive and not, and cannot be, uh, revealed at present. And that usually happens when we're, uh, engaging with, uh, contracts. So when that information is available, we'll make it available. Number three, officers have met with the tenants of Mudford Building to discuss the repairs required to this building. It's worth reiterating that no decisions have been made on the future of these buildings, just that options are being pursued. Just on, uh, buildings, I mean, I, I was raising an issue regarding a community building in, in my patch. We, uh, have a, a, a large number of community assets that need probably tens of millions of pounds spending on them. Uh, Castle Gate is a very fortunate area that's, it's been able to, to get some Luff funding, but the challenge across the city is that there are a number of community buildings that need, uh, a, a lot of money spending to, to bring them back into, into use. It's just a resource we just don't have at the moment. Response to question, uh, four, sorry, uh, sorry, number three, there's no change to the budget for the public realm decoverting and heritage. The funding identified for the development plots will be used if the buildings are included as a development plot and approved by D Look. A response to number four is officers have met with the tenants of Mudford Building to discuss the repairs required to the building. It's worth reiterating, sorry, I just responded to that. And number five, the buildings have not been offered to anyone. They are council buildings and the intention is for them to remain in council ownership. And if I can just add, Anthony, uh, we have a Castle Gate partnership, uh, which meets on a regular basis where information is, uh, shared. And, uh, I've been in, uh, a number of meetings where we've had the Chief Porters Trust, uh, the Friends of Castle and others. So I know there's regular dialogue between officers and these, uh, various, uh, organisations. I think there's a, 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 a number of meetings that have been put in the diary where officers will be meeting with the, the various stakeholders, which includes the chief and, uh, Porters Trust. But I see you wanna come back?
Yeah, I'm one of the representatives on the Castle Gate Partnership, so any regular members there will certainly recognise me. Um, so I'm very much aware of certain things that I'm not allowed to discuss here, or we've been told that we're not allowed to discuss. Um, so I'm not going to mention any financial figures, which I assume is what's hidden in that appendix, but I will state that S1 Arts has confirmed that they were offered the Mudford Building and the, um, Market Tavern. So they believe that they've been offered that. And secondly, we were accidentally informed by, um, one of the project team that the shift in money wasn't just from the buildings element, that it was from sort of the greater fund. Um, so those are two areas where we have some confusion and some serious concerns because even if it is just been shifted from the building development plots on the site to those two buildings, it's a very it's a very considerable amount of money. And in shifting it, surely it has to be detrimental to the development of those other plots. So we have certain concerns around all of that, which those responses you gave obviously seem to skirt around or seem to contradict. So that's why I've come back on this, but thank you.
I mean, just on the levelling up fund, as you know, costs have escalated. I mean, just behind me, we've got the heart of the city, a project where the council is using its borrowing powers up and down the country, probably globally, there's supply issues. Getting older material obviously increases. And projects do vary on occasion. For me, Castle Gate is the jewel and the crown for me for the city centre. And there's a number of aspects to that, which just isn't the Castle Gate site, it's harmony works. And as you recognise, S1 Art Space, we're out for consultation at the moment. I know we've got Mr Ahmed here, who's going to come on in a second to raise some of the issues. But the ambition for all of us is to bring that unique Castle Gate site back into use. So I want to see it decoverged. I've had a, you know, when you look at the visuals which will be putting up shortly, it looks truly amazing. I know there's some teething problems which we need to iron out. And as I said, some of the commercial sensitive information, you know, the council operates in an open and transparent way. If we could, we would have made those figures available, but because it's commercial sensitivity because of that, we've had to put in a closed appendix. But as I said, there is regular dialogue with the partnership and its key stakeholders as well. And can I thank you for coming in today?
Sorry, just one more thing. With regard to that, obviously, other members of the partnership weren't here in part because we weren't made aware that this was even happening. We only discovered this on Friday when the submit was submitted. So unfortunately, I was one of the only people that was able to attend. But we have had dialogues before presenting these questions with Friends of Sheffield Castle, with Friends of the Old Town Hall, even with the EA. And all parties are concerned. It isn't just us. And with the EA being a statutory stakeholder as well as a financial stakeholder in this, them to be concerned is a very serious concern and does endanger the entire project. Because if they find themselves coming back rejecting anything along the path, that will mean that we don't miss, that we miss the deadline for the spend of this money, which could be absolutely catastrophic. So I think it's very important to build that relationship and just be aware that there's shifting. I mean, I completely agree with what you're saying. I understand that there is inflationary pressure. So if you have all this inflationary pressure to then move a substantial part of that fund away from an already threatened by inflationary pressure fund to other elements, it doesn't make sense. It just endangers the quality of the entire project. But thank you. I'll leave it at that.
Yeah, I'm not going to get into a dialogue. I mean, I have a different opinion. But I understand our offices due to meet with a number, including the chief, the Friends of Castle, with the offices, I think in the next week too. So but once again, thanks for coming in. Cheers. From Dexter Johnson, who's not here, so we'll provide him with a written response. Got a question from David Bamford, who's not tending either. So we'll provide a written response. And we allowed Nicola to come in earlier. And the final one is from, sorry, we've had Laura, she's responded to that. And I think the final one's Mr Ahmed, I think. Yeah, it's Ahmed, if you'd like to come across.
Okay, thank you. It's Tofik Mara and I'm from Anders Community Centre. First question, please, regarding Castle Street Development. We are a charity and an existing occupier of Mudford Building since 2009, serving a large number of community mainly vulnerable and disadvantaged people. Just to give you an idea, on daily basis through funded advice bureau that serves over, on average, over 700 beneficiaries every week. Why we were not included on any consultation? That's my first question, please. Second question is, since 2009, we have committed large financial investment in the building, which has made the property waterside and usable as a community centre and advice bureau. In this centre, we managed to create and fund five full-time advisers with the highest possible qualification, experience and over 30 volunteers. What is the plan towards our projects and our property? The third and final question, please, is will you give us a commitment that we will not be forced out of our building? If not, are you aware of the impact on the particular section of the community that we serve? Thank you.
Thank you for coming in. We got the questions very late last night, as you can understand.
That's right. I appreciate your permission to ask them.
Yeah, and I've got a response which I'll respond to for your first question. The response is, as I've said earlier, we're out of consultation at the moment. The consultation ended on the 20th of November. And I'm surprised, I'm making an assumption here, you'd have been invited to the consultation. No?
Never.
Right, sorry, can pick that up. The second one is, we understand there's some. We understand the funds have been spent on the building and I understand you've also met with the officers. But I understand there are some issues still outstanding with the building. Again, on number, your question, the third question, no decisions have been made on the future of the building. And number three is that there are some issues regarding the condition of the building that need tackling. I understand that you'll be meeting with our officers. But what I'd like to do is more than happy to come out with the officer, Alan Seesman, who's at the back over there, to come in, have a chat with yourself, if that's all right. We've got your details, so what we'll do is arrange. And I'll open it up to my committee members as well, usually because it's cross-party. Sorry?
No, no, it hasn't.
No. Sorry, you just threw me there. Yeah, because we operate on a cross-party basis. So as when my colleague Christine Gilligan announced, she's the vice chair, and we've got councillor Sangar, who's our spokesperson for the Liberal Democrats. So I'll open it up to them as well. But we'll definitely come and have a conversation with you. Rest assured, nobody's been kicked out of any building. We don't operate in that manner. But what we do realise is any of our buildings, if they're not safe, if there's an issue around health and safety, it's important that those issues are addressed because it keeps you safe and, you know, it's a liability that we need to address as a council. But be happy to come up and meet up with you, if that's okay.
Much appreciated. Welcome anytime. What I would like to just mention, since 2009, we've done a significant amount of repairs to that building. And I've got latest survey that cost hundreds of thousands and have sent the full survey to the council. I've invited the council to come and have a look, the building, how it was before we start the repairs and after. But they've apologised they couldn't come because it was Corona and restriction, which I appreciate. I won't disclose more information because I think it's, like you said, it's a bit sensitive information because it's a, you know, commercial between Sheffield City Council and myself. But I'm more than happy for you to come and start dialogue. Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming. Moving on to the agenda, the next item we've got is the local renewable. Oh, right. Yeah, yeah, sorry, need to go back to the minutes, jumping around. Forgive me for that. Item five, minutes of the previous meeting held on the 21st of September. Councillor Shaw?
Thank you, Chair. In the minutes, it refers to a number of written responses to questions, public questions. Just a request of whether copies of those written responses can be included in the minutes going forward, just for the information of the committee.
Yes, we can.
Thank you.
Cheers. Anybody else on the minutes? Done public questions and petitions. Next one is the work programme. Yeah.
Okay, so this is the committee's work programme, so it's a live document, so it can change for whatever members want to include on there. Just some key points to note, there's some recommendations set out at the top of page 30. Can I also draw your attention to part 2.1, where there's some referrals from full council on the 2nd of November? One being a referred petition, which has cancelled the Clean Air Zone, and also a 14-point resolution to the council. There are some proposed comments and actions set out underneath each one for your agreement. There are officers here who can advise on those if you need it. The work programme also allows for referrals from local area committees and also for members to suggest potential items for inclusion and discussion.
Councillor Flint? Yeah, okay. The chief valley cycle route is listed as an item to come up and to be confirmed.
Sorry, what page, if you could refer to?
It's in there, as in the work programme, as to be confirmed for a day to report. And all our question is simply this, the consultation period finished on the 16th of November. So I'm just wondering when we might expect a report to be incorporated into work programme with officer recommendations. It's a scheme that's generating a fair amount of correspondence with me. Certainly fairly evenly balanced, as often the case, but I just wonder when officers might be able to bring it forward.
Page 48, sorry, thank you for that.
Thanks, Chair. Matthew Reynolds, Transport Planning and Leadership Manager. The ETO, ETRO, Experimental Traffic Regulation, I can't put my teeth in either this morning, Experimental Traffic Regulation Order for the Chief Valley Scheme is, as you rightly say, Councillor Flint has just finished his consultation period. We're in the process of evaluating the pros and cons, as you've outlined, with the expectation that we'll bring it back to this committee in summer 2023. So another six months or so. Obviously, before that, we'll be working collectively with members of the TRC committee to bring forward what that recommendation needs to say. In addition to that, we have had some difficulties with the delivery of the project, availability of materials, for example, but also some issues coming out through the design process. One thing as well, which has wanted to make members aware and members of public aware is the resource requirements of delivering these schemes is significant, something which we actually quite highly underestimated at the beginning of the project. So with all goes to plan, when we've got the evidence back and we've got the presented opinion of what we should do from an officer recommendation, we'll bring it through the respective briefings for the committee aiming for around September 23.
Thank you, Matt. Any?
Just clarifying, Matt, you said summer 2023, September, and then you think you said September.
Sorry, I said bicep, so summer, so between probably June and September. I was just trying to work out when the committee cycle is going to work.
Councillor Sangar?
Thanks, Chair. I mean, I've got a number of questions, but I'll sort of start general and move in. Can I thank the co-chairs and the officers for the session we had in terms of the work programme? I found it very helpful. So I think my remaining questions would be, in terms of officer capacity, I mean, we've lost four reports from this agenda that are going, coming in December. And I understand that in all those cases, that was about officer capacity corporately to get reports to us rather than the agenda that members were setting. So what can we do about that would be the first question. The second question would be, we have 19 reports on this committee, on this report, that are not due, that were due at some point date to be determined. And the reality for us as members is we can see the end of April in our minds, so we know that's coming very close. And we can see that the agenda you have for the meetings between now and then are already quite full. So what are we going to do about that? It's the second question. I think the third question, we have a review of governance arrangements going on. And is this committee putting in its own response to that? Because clearly, we have, for whatever reason, we have acquired a very packed agenda when the eight policy committees were set up. It feels to me, and that's maybe a personal view, that we seem to have acquired a wider agenda because we covered transport, regeneration and climate change than certain other policy commissions. And we are really struggling with our work programme. So I wonder what can be done so that next year, whoever's on this committee next year knows from the beginning what the programme is over the year and is able to schedule those across the year and get all the officers across the council engaged in a process that we get the reports that they need, but also the reports that we as members are trying to get on. And I feel that the balance, you know, it's been, it's been a learning exercise this year. And it feels to me as if we're really struggling. So I just wondered if we could have a response to those points, Chair.
Yeah, I don't see our exec directory, Kate Martin. Have you got apologies from Kate Martin? No. I mean, I thought she's expected to come, but if I can come in. 13th year of cuts, been involved in as a council since 2010. When you take hundreds of millions out of the revenue budget across the council, it won't just be transport, across the council, it's skeleton staff. Staff are doing a lot more than what's expected. They must be burnt out, just like we are as politicians. I mean, regardless of what model we've fallen into, as somebody, and I look around the room, many of us have been through that journey of those services being decimated. I'm glad we were able to sort out the £2 million pressure on the Clean Air Zone. Just imagine if we'd had that burden. So 13th, we're in 13th year of cuts, so it is going to be very, very difficult. As we all recognise, we've moved into a new committee system. And you're right, regardless who you speak to on the committee, we've been, in a sense, inundated with transport issues. I'm glad we've got different items on the agenda. But because there's so much great activity happening across the city, I mean, if you look at the presentations and the reports that we've got on today, you know, the work that's involved to prepare that does take time. And the only way we can try and resolve some of the issues is to try and build back capacity, which is very difficult on the back of being told by the government that face further cuts just by increasing the council tax base isn't going to resolve the issue either. I mean, you've made reference to the governance review and a number of us, including myself, and you as well, councillor Sangar, have said. And you as well, councillor Sanger, have said, you know, we'd like transport, for example, a lot of, in the twenty mile per hour requests we've had, the school crossing patrol issues at Berle. They could be, in a sense, resolved at a local area committee level. So I'm hoping we will get an opportunity to contribute to the governance review. And it would be worth, if Will could pick this up with Kate Martin, it would be worth having a session with our committee members on how their experience has been over the last six, seven months. And it would also be fair to ask our officers as well how they've found the experience. Because it shouldn't just be politicians, I'll bring in in a sec councillor, I think it should be officers as well who, who need to contribute on how they've found the experience. And you're right, there's so much happening activity wise across the city. And where we can, we try and build some of that resource back. I know there's a challenge, we've, we've been in regular discussions with the mayor, the mayor of combined authority. We're hoping we get some resources from the single pot that the mayor receives. And thirty million sounds a huge amount of money, but if you share that across the four authorities, it's peanuts. And again, trying to squeeze as much as we can from the MCA, it's good we're getting some of these grants. But until we don't get some stability from government around revenue support, it's always going to be difficult for us as a local authority to try and achieve what we can. I don't know if Will wants to come in on an officer perspective.
Thanks, Chair. I mean, I, I recognise some of the points that councillor Sanger makes there. You know, clearly, as a relatively new officer to the, to the organisation, it's been immediately apparent to me the extent of the workload going through this committee. There is a huge amount, particularly in comparison to some of the other committees, that's not an excuse, that's just the way that it is. We did have a very valuable session, as councillor Sanger mentioned, a few weeks ago now, to go through the work plan. And, and I think, you know, what I said at that session and what I'll continue to say is that should be the first of a series of sessions where we constantly review the work plan, we make sure that members are happy with what's on the work plan. But importantly, what they would like to see in terms of prioritisation there, I think there's a decision to be made on which items come forward over the next year and in, and in the limited time that we've got in these committees. And, and Chair, I, I share your view around looking for further opportunities to increase revenue budget, particularly for this committee. You know, there is sizable work underway at the moment with MCA colleagues to look at how we might secure additional resources to support the work of this council, that will continue. But ultimately, we can only get so much in, into these committees going forward. We are looking at various models and we will be inputting into the, into the governance review and making recommendations how we might, as to how we might work more efficiently. One of those might be, to, to cover your point around sort of localised transport initiatives, working more closely with our communities colleagues and the local area committees as well, to make sure that we're feeding those local schemes and, and important schemes for local communities through. And perhaps a new mechanism to deal with those, that, that we can, we can process them more efficiently as part of this committee system. But yeah, I think, I think as has been recognised by, by all councillors in, on this committee, you know, we are on in a kind of learning curve, we're only six months into this new committee system. And we need to be making positive recommendations about how we move forward.
We've had big chunks of work, I mean, the, the local plan, I remember, no, Mike isn't here, head of planning. I mean, we meet on a fortnightly basis as a cross party. And I remember Mike saying to us, can we get some sessions in, in the evening, if you remember, because the importance of, of the work. So it, it is challenging and it's credit to us all, regardless of what political persuasion you are, the commitment that we demonstrate to try and get business done. So I see you want to come back.
Yeah, thank, thank you for your, your response, Chair, and thank, thank you for, thank you for, for Will's response as well. I mean, in, in terms of your, your response, Chair, I mean, yeah, clearly, we, we know where we are in terms of the financial challenge. But that applies across all eight policy committees. And this committee, it seems to me, I mean, I, I read the agendas of all, of all nine committees. And it seems to me the pressure points are, the pressure points in terms of the budget are not the pressure points in terms of the agenda, they are two separate points. This committee has a full agenda, finance subcommittee has a full agenda, and strategy and resources has a full agenda. The other policy committees are full enough and they're very, very busy. And colleagues who are on them tell me they are very busy. And I say, well, how many items have you got on your, on your agenda? And they say, oh, we, we had five and then we've got six coming in. And I say, how many on your, how many items have you got on your, on your, on your work plan without a date? Oh, no, we don't have any of that. So that seems to be just something that we have. So we have got a problem and we do need, I welcome the idea of a further, of a further session where we can go through these nineteen and either put dates on them this year or say they're carried over to next year. We, we just need, we just need to make that hard and fast decision. And it's sad because there's some things that I really don't want to lose, but I mean, I, I know I'll have other places to, to argue that point. In, in terms of, in terms of the structure, I really welcome what, what you both said in terms of local transport, and clearly what I've been saying since two thousand and thirteen, and which we moved amendments, you know, four times last year to try to get, make sure it happened. And it's only by sucking it and seeing it and seeing that this hasn't worked, that we're going to hopefully get to a cross-party consensus that where a local transport issue is a local transport matter and not a citywide. And I accept sometimes a citywide things, it really needs to move, move down to the laxness in, in some way. So I'd welcome that. But even if, even if we did that, we would still be too full on this agenda. And I think my other challenge to the, to, to, to the officers, I guess, rather than to Chair, i- is in terms of the relationship of this policy committee with the regeneration board and with strategy and resources. And if the key decisions for the city are being taken at strategy resources, the key regeneration decisions should, do, do we have to accept sacrificing some of the regeneration policies of this committee and accept that it should be at the strategy resources committee where they take decisions, the regeneration board where they get the information? And, and I don't want to do that because I'm really interested in it. But I'm just wondering if that's a sacrifice we should make as a, as a committee to manage our agenda, certainly from, from, from next year? And whether we should think about that in addition to the delegating the transport stuff? And that will give us more time for the strategic transport, which we're all very interested in. And we've got some really big transport decisions on, on, you know, the renewal of super tram, the, the, the bus services across Sheffield, as well as, yeah, a, a, as, as well as, you know, the whole active travel agenda. So we've got all of that that we can still deal with. And then we've got climate change and dealing with the climate and biodiversity emergencies are just so important. I just feel that we need to free up as much time as possible next year for, for leading on, 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 on dealing with, on, on responding to the climate and biodiversity crisis. So I really think we should, should think about those proposals, Chair.
Thank you for your comments. councillor Hirst and then councillor Cooper.
Thank you, Chair. I recognise the pressures that councillor Sanger spoke about. I have to say, this is an extraordinary committee with major strategic policies that if we get right, will change our city in the future. And I do appreciate the investment of time that officers have put in, putting that programme of training and development and briefings together so that we're aware of, of, of what we are discussing in this committee as members and the background. And we're able to contribute in a positive way. And also the commitment from elected members. I, I don't believe that any other committee has that level of, of programme of development that it carries out almost as a matter of course. And I think that reflects the, the development of this committee from a transitional board last year. We have simply carried on and, and, and showed the, the, the business. But going forward, my answers, my comments are much less strategic level than yours were, Chair. I was just thinking, we are a cross-party committee. The governance review is being led through, well, the, the governance review is, is taking place through that cross-party committee. And I think it would be useful to, to submit a joint response from this committee of how, what we think is going right and what we think is going wrong and what we think could be improved on in the future. That's not meant as any criticism, it's meant as a learning process because this is new for us all. And at the very least, I do know that members will be being sent a link to make their own individual contributions into the governance review. And that will be an ongoing iterative process rather than a, a one-off and we've done all we can process. But if nothing more, if we can't agree to, to submit a a position for ourselves, then perhaps we at least submit a copy of this minute so that that meeting reflects, is able to reflect on this, this discussion that we've had and include it in the, the outcomes of the governance review. Thank you, Chair.
Just on that final point, I think as a committee, I think, rather than just using the, the minute, if we can get a, a thorough session in, I think that's important for us to, to feedback because myself, my co-chair, councillor Cooper and councillor Sanger, the amount of commitment that is required is phenomenal. And the same goes for, for the officers. That's why I think having each committee member given an opportunity to respond to the governance review is, is important. But thank you for your contribution. councillor Cooper?
I'm going to change the subject, Chair, if that's all right. I'm just aware of the time and I wondered, as we have two people from the Castle Gate here, could we put their agenda item earlier? Would that cause any problems?
I thought if we take decarbonising, decarbonisation route maps, because we've got Jennifer still here and then we can move the levelling up up the agenda as well. councillor Roof, your rest up, so.
Yeah, sorry, I, I mean, I'm going to actually ask a question. And just before I do that, just in response to councillor Sanger, other committees, we are, I sit on the finance committee, we are very busy on those committees. I must say, our last committee nearly lost four hours. So yeah, we are busy and it's interesting to note, we're actually only on item seven of thirteen, it's one and a half hours into the meeting. But nevertheless, some questions for, for the transport team. I note on page forty-five, the recommendations for, or on the final scheme for implementation after the ETRO of Netheridge. It's going to be taking place on the sixteenth of March, two thousand and twenty-three. I'm just interested to know when, because there is no final date for that to be implemented by, are you able to give any, any ideas on when that would be, please?
Thanks councillor Roof. At this, I'll have to take it back to the project team and get a confirmed date for you, but we would be looking to take as the, as the chief valley cycle route.
Just another question regarding, that my constituency is obviously concerned that, you know, myself and many others have been telling them that, you know, this was a trial, a trial period for six months. And it's coming up towards the end of the trial, I think Friday this week, if, if I'm, if I'm not wrong. Just wanted to know, so between the end of this week and March, what will happen to the current filters that are already in there? Will they be removed or will they be staying?
Sorry, I just don't want to get involved in the intricate details of a project. I think the question regarding feedback, happy for the officers to respond. I mean, one of the questions I was going to ask is, have you had your session, the feedback session with the officers? You know, the, the two consultation events we've had, we had the, the feedback session, that was one question I was going to ask yourself. Because I think it's important you and your ward colleagues are given that opportunity to, to feedback. Because that's where I was hoping, you know, the finer details of the project, I was hoping that's where that would be picked up, but.
That's fine, I'm maybe, I'm just interested to know whether those.
I don't want to get into the details of the project, if that, if that discussion can happen outside this meeting, if that's okay.
No problem, thank you.
But, but the, the point regarding the, the dates and stuff, happy for you to, to ask any questions.
No problem, thank you.
I mean, there was a question earlier on about the March date.
Yeah, I think I answered it, yeah.
One request from my colleague who's asked that the speed limit on Rails Road and Bingley Road be added on to the, the work programme. Could add that on, fantastic. The next item, if we can bring that up, is the decarbonisation. Mark, could you, is that, is that you, Mark? And then if colleagues are happy, as councillor Cooper has suggested, we'll move up the, the levelling up. So we'll take the decarbonisation. Over to you, Mark.
Thank you, Chair. So this is the first of two reports that we're presenting this morning. This report is on the local renewable energy fund. And this follows the approval for a capital budget amendment of three point five million for the installation of renewable energy and energy efficiency.
So, so a point of order, Chair, I, 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 I thought we were, I thought we were just doing the decarbonisation. I thought, I thought we were going, I thought, I thought we were going seven, eleven.
Yeah.
Twelve, twelve, eight, nine, ten. I thought that was, that was what we just agreed.
Yeah, eleven and twelve. So if we, if we could leave the item eight, the local renewable energy fund to, to the end, because we've got members of public. If we do number eleven, decarbonisation first and then item twelve levelling, I'm not there, so moving the agenda around. Is that okay, Mark?
That's fine, yeah, apologies for that, so just understanding. So, okay, so agenda item eight then, this is the, sorry, eleven, decarbonisation roadmap progress report. So this, this report is responding to those questions, I think, at the council, at the committee in September around progress on, on the work on decarbonisation. Obviously, the ten-point plan for climate action was adopted by the council in March and provided a framework for how we'll act in the short term. And also include putting climate at the centre of decision-making, as well as committing the organisation formally to reducing carbon emissions to net zero by two thousand and thirty. One of those commitments within the plan was to create a series of route maps. And this report responds to that in terms of giving an update. The report is very clear in the introduction that climate change is recognised as one of the greatest challenges of our lifetime. It's undermining every dimension of global health and is threatening economic stability in sectors such as agriculture and food production. And also the changes that are expected to disproportionately affect our vulnerable communities locally as well as globally. But also notes that there are significant opportunities that can be gained if we take action in terms of homes and buildings that are warmer and cost less to heat, local jobs created through green energy, and also reducing exposure to market volatility in terms of energy prices, for example. The, the report then goes on to set the detail around the, the route maps, which, as I said, the ten-point plan gave a commitment to producing those route maps as iterative, agile and delivery focused and developed over the next eighteen months, working across the council and also with other organisations and individuals across the city to develop the path, building on the pathways to zero at carbon reports, which are produced as part of the evidence base and identifying ways forward. As things stand at the moment, we're currently developing two of those route maps, which are the our council and the way we travel route maps, along with other work which is contributing to the other, the other route maps. The two route maps that I've detailed are going to be prioritised as they are demonstrating in terms of what the council's doing. In particular, taking action, demonstrating leadership and encouraging others in the city to take action. And the other seven, the other route maps, which I'll just quickly run. Uh, and the other seven, the other, uh, route maps, which I'll just quickly run through in terms of the the titles, uh, we've got our council, which is in progress and due to be completed, presented to this committee in June. Uh, that's an overview of work to date, will also include actions that we're taking across the organisation to decarbonize housing stock, non-domestic estate, our fleet, which includes grey fleets and also things like street lighting and looking at how we use our land for energy generation and sequestration initiatives. Uh, the way we travel, which, uh, is also being completed and progressed at the moment, which will cover areas around how we decarbonize our vehicles, increasing active travel, improving public transport and also look at consolidating freight. And then the remaining route maps, energy generation and storage, uh, which is still in development and obviously picks up some of the work, which is covered in the the other report we're presenting today, about three point five million pounds for, uh, local renewable energy generation, but also picking up some of the other initiatives. Our business in industry, which is covering areas around industrial decarbonization, anticipated to cover, uh, some of the key issues around how we decarbonize commercial property, uh, and also looking at the role with working with SMEs around how they also develop capacity to decarbonize. And on that point, we are working with local partners from business, from the two universities and also with the M C A on a number of programmes, looking at this as a, as a, as I say, there's a lot of action that's taking place in the city on this, uh, so building on some of that existing work. Our homes, uh, this roadmap will cover the decarbonization of homes of all tenure, so this isn't just related to housing that the council owns, uh, this is looking at the city, uh, across the city, but will obviously be coordinated with the emerging council housing strategy and also with some work which colleagues in the Housing and Neighbourhood Service are doing at the moment in terms of looking at the actions that are required to decarbonize our own council housing stock. Uh, and then there are also two other route maps which are around how we use our land, which, uh, is taken in that broadest sense of land, referring to land across the city. So this is the collective, i.e., you know, how we work with other organisations as well, looking at opportunities and also that link to, uh, the 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 mention around earlier around the nature emergency as well, around actually how we're using land to to consider those sorts of issues, as well as looking at food and 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 other sorts of issues around planning. And then the final roadmap is around how we, uh, what we buy, eat and throw away. So this is, uh, anticipated to pick up issues around things like the circular economy and how we reduce waste and consumption, uh, producing, uh, promoting reuse and obviously increasing recycling. So, uh, as part of the work we're undertaking at the moment on those two route maps, uh, we're planning on undertaking consultation on the transport roadmap early in the new year, along with, um, subject to the funding that's referenced in the report, a programme of wider engagement that will follow the principles that were outlined earlier in response to the South Yorkshire Climate Alliance and build on some of the work which we've been developing as part of, uh, a successful funding programme we've supported to, uh, undertake training as part of involving the UK one hundred's local climate engagement programme. So we'll be applying the principles of that, uh, of of that into the, into the, that wider engagement programme. Um, alongside that, obviously be working closely with the committee to develop this approach, both to those two route maps and also to the other remaining five route maps on the back of that. And, uh, I think that probably covers the main points and just conscious of time, I'll I'll stop there and respond to any questions.
Thanks ever so much, Mark. Any questions or comments? Councillor Auckland?
Just looking at the number of route maps that you're producing and two are in progress, I question ironically in some respects, for your, for your roadmap, have you got a roadmap that shows that you can produce a roadmap by June? Have you got the resources and do you feel confident about those deadlines and could any of them be brought forward possibly?
Uh, just in response to that, I think there's, um, a good point made in terms of the complexity of these route maps. I mean, clearly they do cover a very wide range of issues and each roadmap will involve some, uh, wide-ranging discussions and I think one of the things that we've got to be aware of obviously is the the time that it takes to actually have some of those discussions and have those meaningful conversations, particularly with other partners in the city. We had a very successful city summit last week, uh, and we understand that there's a huge amount of work that's taking place across the city, so we're looking to see how we can build a lot of that into the programme that we're developing through the route maps. But I think one of the things that's referenced in the report is the need and again responding to some of the questions that came through in the public questions around how we undertake that wider engagement. At the moment, that's, I think, is an area where we're seeking additional resource to enable the the service to to undertake that so that we can have those conversations and bring that into the, into the process. I think in terms of trying to accelerate some of the route maps, I think one of the things again is just being mindful that we do need to have those conversations both internally with different parts of the organisation, that it's not just the responsibility of one team in the sense of producing this, we need to make sure that this is owned by everyone in the organisation, but also that it has to be something which other people in the city recognise, have contributed towards and I think most importantly, are willing to take action on themselves. And that process does take time and I think that's really where the question around the timescales needs to be dependent on how we get that buying.
Councillor Sangher?
Yeah, th- thank you, Chair, and can I can I thank officers for putting on the the citywide summit? I think it was very useful and I think that myself and councillor Kubo and councillor Jesse, I found it, I found it very helpful. Um, I I I think, but I think it goes to to the absolute key of this, that we have some very good partnership working in this city and we have some very good organisations that are, that that are, that share the council's commitment to go in net zero by by twenty thirty. But I I I I still come back to the the public question we had at the beginning, um, about using the toolkit, um, because I I I came out of that that workshop feeling, that that summit feeling that there was two or three percent of people who know what cha- what change they need to do themselves, uh, and in their organisation to get to net zero by twenty thirty, but I I don't feel it's yet a hundred percent of the people of Sheffield. And I think we need to find ways, extra ways of using, u- using the toolkit we have and i- if, you know, what this paper is saying is that by by the end of twenty twenty-three, we are going to, we're we're going to, uh, you know, be clear on those first two route maps and then those those other five, we will be presenting them during twenty twenty-three. That's a lot of work, um, and out of that will come, um, a renewed commitment from the people of Sheffield to 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 meet the target, to meet the net zero target by twenty thirty. That's a huge amount of work, um, and I just think we as members need to make clear, clear, clear to officers in terms of the budget decisions we we take, uh, to take, take in March that we we give, we give Mark and his team the support necessary, but that it it's not just about one team, it's about the council is committed to this target and that we work with partners and we use the whole range of 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 tools in that toolkit to to reach out across the, across Sheffield because i- it feels to me that although th- this is a commitment shared by some officers and some and and elected members, it's, we've not embedded it across across Sheffield and I think we have a lot to do next year in twenty twenty-three and I think this report is saying that our agenda, the agenda for whatever the the T R C is post-May twenty twenty-three needs to really focus on making sure these route maps are in place and are being delivered across Sheffield. Thanks, Chair.
Comments? Uh, councillor Shaw?
Uh, thank you, Chair, uh, just, um, two, uh, questions. So first is, we've got these series of route maps, do we have to wait until all of them have been delivered and presented before we can start, you know, implementing the, uh, recommendations within them? And, um, can we just be, um, clear that these these are route maps, they 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 will, what? Will will they set out like a kind of a strict, uh, timetable of actions or are they just plans for plan? Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Chair, uh, sorry, just, um... Just responding to the, uh, the questions from, uh, from councillor Shores, i- in terms of whether we have to wait, absolutely not, I think is the answer on that. Um, one of the things that we were clear with in the ten-point plan is that these the these temp- that these route maps are in a sense, uh, iterative, so they will be changing, so they'll recognise that actually there are certain things which we need to accelerate, where there's action we need to undertake now. And I think a good example of that is some of the work that came to the committee, to the last committee meeting around the short-term action plan on electric vehicles. So that's reflected in the in the in the roadmap, but obviously there's various things that we can start moving on in in regards to electric vehicle recharging. There's also other activity that we're undertaking currently around, for example, in a participant city within the Bayes heat network zoning pilots. And again, that work is ongoing, we're involved and working closely with with partners in the city. And again, in that report, the second report bringing this this morning is, uh, identifying a bid to br- bring in additional hundred thousand to actually support that work. So again, it's not about waiting until the plans have have been developed to then take those actions, it's about doing those two things together hand in hand, so we're delivering the actions, we're also working on the plans. I'm sorry, there was a second question and I, um, could you just remind me of that, please?
Um, yes, it was just whether, uh, these plans will have like a strict kind of timetable of 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 actions within them or, um, or not.
Thank you, Chair, if I could just respond to that. I I think one of the key things in terms of the route maps is that they they really are action and delivery focused and that then informs kind of programmes of activity. So committed ac- action, um, action to be developed, enabling activity. So i- in that sense, it becomes a a live programme that we then kind of develop and deliver over time. So each of the the kind of actions within the plan, um, should have that timeline associated with them, um, and and set that out really clearly. That's that's something that we 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 must produce in terms of being able to kind of report back through committee in terms of that progress and action, uh, both in terms of the the issues that that the council will hold responsibility for, but also looking more broadly around what the city needs to do.
Thank you, Tom. Councillor Pugh?
Thank you, yeah. Um, I just wanted to just thank the officers for bringing this, um, report forward, it's really, really helpful. I think it really helps to set out the the sort of timescales and the and and how it links to other established policies and strategies. Um, I I should, um, have declared an interest at the outset of the meeting because I'm a a company director of, um, South Yorkshire Climate Alliance, so I just wanted to just have that noted. Um, um, uh, the specific question on the timescales, on roadmap five, our homes and six, how we use our land, um, it just strikes me that, um, there'll be quite a lot of crossover between those route maps and the work that's underway on the high-level, um, strategy and policy around the local plan. I just wanted to just explore, um, what kind of is being done. I understand these iterative processes, so therefore there's scope for some of the work to tie those roadmaps into the the local plan before the overall roadmaps are finished, but I just wondered what's the process, uh, of that and and will we be able to see anything in draft, in very early draft form?
Interesting question.
Thank you.
Very valid. Is is that you or Will?
Yeah, a good start on that, so, okay, so yeah, thank you, um, thank you for that, so for for the 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 feedback on that. I think, um, in terms of the, um, the timescales, I think part of the timescales have been driven by the s- the the need to focus around the our council roadmap to demonstrate the actions that we're taking as an organisation to start, uh, taking the necessary, uh, programmes to start decarbonizing as a council. Uh, we are involved in those discussions with planning colleagues around trying to make sure that the local plan and the policies that are within the the emerging plan align with what we're developing, uh, around the route maps and some of the thinking on that. On the our homes roadmap, part of that was, uh, the decision around the timing of that was around informed by work that housing colleagues were developing around the, uh, that the the housing strategy, which again, uh, the team are involved in those discussions around the emerging housing strategy, uh, and also a piece of work that they're undertaking at the moment, uh, where they've commissioned external consultants to look at what's required in order for our own housing stock to reach net zero, so the actions that are required. And again, um, that piece of work, I think, is due to conclude sometime early next year, so that's gonna help inform some of that. Um, I think what we, um, what we could do is look at the programme that we have at the moment. I think the challenge again, um, comes down to the resource around the team and where things fit in terms of the programmes, try and deliver, uh, the route maps as they're laid out at the moment, but I think that that's an option where we can look at actually how we program some of that and where, um, where some of those, uh, opportunities are perhaps to bring some of that work forward. I think it's also about identifying where there are key elements, uh, you mentioned about the local plan again, how that would fit into the into the development of the roadmap, so pieces of work can move forward, um, and then perhaps parked while we wait for some of the other work to to be delivered.
Thanks, Chair, just to add to that, I think I think councillor Pugh makes a really good point there around, uh, tying in our climate action and biodiversity action with the development of local plan. And I think as Mark's outlined, um, local plan has been informed by, um, our climate action thus far, there will still be further opportunities to look at that. Local plan is is still going through committee system, but we'll be going into, as everybody knows, a period of formal public consultation in the new year. There will be opportunities to review alongside that public consultation what we need to do around, uh, our climate impact and making sure that we reflect work coming out of, uh, the route maps. And then as I mentioned earlier around the the SWIFT BRICS issue, local plan is a strategic planning document, underneath that there will be a multitude of documents, supplementary planning guidance, which will look at various detailed policies, including biodiversity, inclu- including Sheffield's carbon and climate response. So of course, we will make sure that the route maps and any proposed action that's set down there is reflected in supplementary planning guidance so that we're speaking with one voice, uh, around what the council is doing to address the climate emergency and biodiversity emergencies. And as Mark said, you know, the 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 route maps need to be agile, they need to be, uh, able to flex, to respond to ongoing challenges and new challenges, um, and certainly, um, in in a planning context, we'll need to reflect that through supplementary planning guidance. Thank you for that, Paul. Uh, I mean, some huge challenges there, just following on from, uh, councillor Pugh. I mean, it's tens of millions for the, or billions, I think it is, for for the council estate, but equally, uh, the same amount in billions, uh, for the private sector and we know the the disparity and inequality that exists a- across the city and without government intervention, uh, a lot of communities are gonna be left behind. Uh, a question in a sense from me, uh, the M C A and the mayor have made an announcement setting up some kind of climate citizens, uh, assembly. It would be worth, uh, you know, joined up this collaborative working because the 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 M C A obviously covers the the region, but we are within that region and they're not looking for a response, but it'd be good next time, uh, we get a briefing to to look at how we are working collaboratively because resources-wise, as I said, uh, there's another further round of cuts. I mean, the the commitment from the council, we have a senior officer now in Will, which is great, shows the commitment from the council, but again, uh, on the back of, uh, further cuts, it's it's a huge challenge to try and meet, uh, so so much need. I know w- we are one of the eight committees, if we were sat in it, in another committee, they'd probably raise, uh, similar concerns and issues, uh, as us, but can I thank you and your team, uh, for the great work you've done here? And the recommendation for members is to to note the r- report. Well, thanks ever so much. Can we bring on Tammy and Alan for levelling up? There are, just before, uh, Tammy and Alan need to introduce themselves, just for members and, uh, members of the public, there is a closed, uh, item, uh, within the, uh, report, so if we are gonna, once the the officers have done the the presentation, if there are any questions regarding the close report, if we can leave them till the end, uh, because we'll have to ask members of the public to to leave, uh, at that point, so if we can, uh, do the presentation and then, as I say, any questions regarding the, please ask them, but anything regarding the, uh, the commercial sensitivity, then I'll have to ask members of the public to to leave. Thanks ever so much, over to you.
Thank you. And we are gonna run through, um, the report, which gives an update on the four areas of levelling up fund activity that the council's been engaged with. Um, Alan's gonna give a brief overview, um, and then we'll run through a a few visuals, which, um, just to try and highlight the work that's been ongoing. So I'll hand over to to Alan first.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll try to keep this as brief as possible. The the report itself provides a summary of all four levelling up fund bids, two of which have been approved, two of which we're still waiting for decisions on. And try to provide a summary of what's in each of those bids. And then there's a bit of a progress update on the two approved ones. So the two approved bids were submitted in June twenty one and the government announced the success of those bids in October twenty one. We were awarded the full thirty seven million pounds requested from Government of Love Fund, which was twenty million pounds for the Gateway to Sheffield project and seventeen million pounds for investment in Attcliff. In March twenty two, the government issued a further prospectus for round two of levelling up. And the criteria for those bids was largely unchanged from round one and the deadline for submissions was sixth of July. And two bids were submitted via that round, one for Healy regeneration and one for Parkwood Springs. So in summary of what's in the Gateway to Sheffield bid, the approved round one bid, that's a twenty million pound package of love funds, which has three elements of it, which is mainly the Castle Site, fifteen point seven million pounds. Park Hill Art Space, two point six million pounds, and Harmony Works, one point six million pounds. The Castle Site is the centrepiece of that and we're working hard there to deliver new public realm decouverting of the River Sheaf, interpretation of the heritage assets down there and the delivery of development plots. The money for Park Hill Art Space is match funding to a project that S1 are pursuing, which allows us to provide a fit out of their facility to provide new art space, workspace and living space. Harmony Works are contributing to that project, which has just achieved planning permission, is that we are contributing to the acquisition of the building and their match funding will help fit that out for facility for a new music hub and space for Sheffield Music Service and lots of other very good things. In Attcliff, it brings three projects together that total investment is seventeen just over seventeen million pounds. The big project within that is the Centre for Child Health Technology, which is eight point eight million pounds. And again, I think has just got through planning permission. So and and the other elements of that are connectivity and movement associated to matching investment through the Transforming Cities Fund and then investment in and around key buildings on Adelphi Square. I've recently been to finance committee to confirm the acquisition of the Adelphi Cinema through that process and land next to the Adelphi Cinema. In terms of the levelling, the the round two bid, Healy regeneration was a seventeen four, seventeen point four million pound funding ask. And if that bid's successful, it would see the completion and restoration of the former Hans Grove School Building. It would see completion of Ash Tree Yard Restoration, which would create an outdoor industry hub. It would see improved access, it would see refurbishment of community facilities and creation of a new community garden. And it would create a state of the art primary care network hub. It would also look at the restoration and regeneration of Mers Brook Hall. For Parkwood Springs, the council has also bid for nineteen point two million pounds of funding there. If that was successful, it would provide improved access to Parkwood Springs. I'm sure members are aware that access to Parkwood Springs is the key element of what we want to do, both in terms of new leisure destination there and in our ambitions for a wider country park. It would allow for site clearance, clean up and enabling works. And it would enable investment in trails and wild trails and wayfinding. Before we move on to the third, I think I'll pass back to Tammy to just run through some of the visuals associated with progress on the schemes.
Thank you, Alan. Yeah. Is it possible to get the slides up on the screen? I don't think they're showing yet.
It's on that one.
Oh, it's on that one. Yeah, thank you. Before I start, I mean, obviously, there's been a number of questions about this report. I think it's fair to say that we are in the detailed design phase, often with regeneration funding. And the funding's announced, but there's a lot of work goes on behind the scenes before projects start on site and a lot of detailed decisions that need to be taken. At this point in time, this report is providing an update and there will be a number of further decisions that are brought to committee as we progress through through the scheme. So we're very much in the design option feasibility stage at the moment still. And the levelling up fund has tight deadlines and outputs that we need to deliver. And as a competitive regeneration fund, government hold us to those quite tightly. So it's just important to be aware of that. So I wanted to run you through some kind of visuals, just to try and illustrate some of the things that we're talking about, the work that's gone on. So the the first one is of the concept plan, which has been developed following a series of workshops with through the Live Works proposals that were undertaken over the June, over June, a number of workshops and with consultation. These are now out to public consultation and we had a number of events held through the More Market and across the city to share these with the public in general. This is an initial overview of might look like. It's fair to say that these are really ambitious proposals and something we really want to see delivered. And but given the the risk that we've got around construction funding at the moment, we're going to have to make some hard choices about exactly what can be delivered with the love funding and what we're going to need to seek additional funding for. And that's something that we'll bring back through to committee once we've undertaken the the public consultation. The intention then is that we work through this consultation plan and we take this take on board the comments that come back through the consultation and through discussion with local stakeholders and the Castle Gate partnership. And then these will be brought forward to planning in January. And again, we'll share an update with this committee as those proposals are taken forward and we've got the results of the public consultation back. Next slide, please. This is just a further outline of what what the site might look like at night. And and you can see around the edge of that and on the previous slide, the the development plots that are part of the levelling up fund proposals as well. Okay, next slide. This is an outline of what Harmony Works potentially could look like. So for those of you who aren't aren't aware, the building that's being looked at and considered is Canada House, which is a grade two building in Castle Gate. It's it's a large building and it's a really great building. And at the moment, the the Harmony Works proposal has now received planning permission. We are in discussions at the moment about securing the match funding. So for both Harmony Works and S1 Art Space, the delivery of those projects levelling up fund is contributing a minor, is a minor stake in those projects and they rely heavily on match funding. So both of those projects are going to be dependent on match funding being secured. And we're we're in discussion with funders at the moment to support support those applications. So really quite an exciting space. We'll we'll breathe new life into what is a a large heritage building in Castle Gate and we'll really start to activate the space down there. So moving on to Centre for Child Health Technology, this is part of the Attcliff Levelling Up Fund bid. And this again has now received planning permission. This is a state of the art facility, working with the Children's Hospital, the Legacy Park Limited, Sheffield Olympic Legacy Park and academia to really bring forward an exciting proposal for for the area and which really fits, I think, with the Olympic Legacy Park and starts addressing the health inequalities that we have across the city, bringing clinicians, academics and the NHS together. Next slide. And as we mentioned earlier, I think we've had this slide at committee before and there was, there were a number of comments made about this. But essentially, this is very much about how we enhance Attcliff High Street and how we make real improve, real lasting improvements to make a difference to how we connect Attcliff through to the Olympic Legacy Park and how we improve the the street scene really there. Next one, please. And as Alan mentioned, we've now agreed to acquire the Adelphi building in Attcliff as a cultural hub really and to provide an anchor and footfall and some real activity around Attcliff. So we're working up proposals again once we've secured the building as to how that will be taken forward in the eventual end use. Okay.
So after all of that, and just to before we move to questions, just to say that there's some recommendations in the report and they are that to note the positive progress made on Love Round One project, Scapes, Sheffield, Natcliffe. Note the submission of the two bids to Love Round Two and request a further report brought to this committee once the outcome of those is known, which we expect to be sometime in the autumn. Approve the implementation of thirteen recommendations of the Live Works workshop, which has been used to inform the consultation process that's happened on the Gateway to Sheffield site. To note that resources identified in Gateway to Sheffield Love Bid for the creation of development plots will be used in the first instance to make good two buildings on the Castle Site. And finally, note the exempt appendix to an authorised office to seek approval from D Look and the Department for Home, Levelling Up Homes and Communities to relocate an element of the project to the Castle Site. So after questions.
Thanks very much. Great news there regarding flying approval for both projects, Harmony Works. So well done and Attcliff as well. So any questions? No? Any comments? Sorry, questions? Yeah.
Yeah, so so clearly really good news in terms of in terms of in 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 terms of Harmony Works and getting planning, planning approval and I think very excited about the fact we were successful first. But just just go explain to me these 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 recommendations because really in relation to to the questions, to the to the questions we had at the beginning. Because my understanding, and I say my my understanding of the of the Gateway to Sheffield thing was that, you know, that the the first, the first priority was to be the decouverting of the the Sheep and Port and the renaturalising, that the renaturalising of the river and the fish passes. And it seems to me that these, that when we get to recommendation D and E, neither of those, neither of those fit that. And you're saying there should be a different priority?
To be clear, we're not asking for a different priority. What we're saying is that in terms of the Castle Site, there's fifteen point seven million pounds allocated to that in the original bid. That money is for decouverting of the River Sheaf, creation of a new public park, public realm, interpretation heritage asset and the creation of a number of development plots. What we're asking for in this report in terms of that element of the bid is to use the money that was previously identified for development plots to be applied to bring in two buildings so that that money can be used to make those buildings good that otherwise would be detrimental to the investment we're making on the rest of the site.
The question we had, Chair, it's for you, Chair. The question, the questions we we had at the public at at the start of this meeting was that those two buildings were not within the, were not within the original envelope of of this love bid and that we and we as members have been briefed that the priority was decouverting the river and using the archaeological remains as a, you know, as as attractive public feature. And that was the priority of the love bid. And it seems to me that we're being asked to change that at this point.
Yeah, I'll answer that. So the the love bid, when it was submitted, had a number of outputs which we signed up to. That was decouverting of the River Sheaf, creation of public realm, eight so many metres squared, enhancing the castle remains and creation of a number of development plots. And that had a metre squared attached to it as well. Now, if if we, if we looked at that concept plan, there were a number of development plots around the edge of the the public realm concept plan. So the back again, back again. Next one. That one. So you can see on there, there are a number of development plots around the public realm. They have always been included in the love fund and we are not diverting any money that's been set aside from any of the other works to that. What we're saying is that we're going to accelerate the two buildings as the first two development plots around that site because they are in desperate need of being brought forward. The other development plots, we are still intending to do, deliver, but they may be delivered in a later phase.
But i- if if that was the case, our our partners in other groups who have been briefed in this would not be bringing such questions. And I think, I I feel as a member of this committee, and you know, clearly I'm the spokesperson, so I've had additional briefings, I've had access to, you know, a additional report. I I feel that the nine of us haven't been fully briefed in terms of what you are asking us to do in terms of recommendation D and E. I feel I I feel under briefed on this. I feel that you've you've changed it from the presentation that we were given earlier. You've you've changed the details of where the money is going and the the details, some of which I accept is in the confidential report, which can't talk about. But I I just don't, I I don't feel sufficiently briefed to to be able to agree D and D and E at this point in time, Chair.
From my memory, Tammy, can you just repeat what you said about the the two buildings, please?
Yeah, so the two buildings are development plots on the Castle Site. There's no intention to divert any money from any of the other areas. The the money that's set aside for development plots is still set aside for development plots. The money for the Castle Site is still set for Castle Site. The idea is to accelerate the bringing forward of these two buildings as development plots. That's the, that's what recommendation is about.
Right. And and you're concerned with the two?
I mean, my my concern, I I'm going to choose my words carefully. My 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 first concern is that the nine members of this committee haven't been fully briefed in terms of the implement, the how the the Love One funding and this scheme fits together and how and what decisions we need to take at this point. And that's my first concern, that we've not been properly briefed. But my my second concern is that at least recommendation D implies a change of the priority from what we agreed, from from what was put in into the Love One bid. And I have to say, I was first briefed on this in May nineteen ninety nine, that within five years, we should decover the the area where the the complements of the Sheep and the Don. And here we are, twenty three years later, we haven't done it. So I'm, I I don't want to lose that because I was told I needed to do it within five years of May nineteen ninety nine. And I failed to do it because the electorate got rid of me and replaced me with other councillors, other parties who stopped being of such priority. So so, you know, I I want to see, I want to see that decouverting and 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 naturalising and naturalisation of those bits of the river's done. And I and I want the the remains of the castle to be visible to the public. And that's what I thought Love One was achieving. I just feel that's not what I'm hearing. And there's some really good things in the in Love One. And the Attcliff scheme is absolutely excellent. It's just these particular issues in terms of the 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 Castle Gate site.
I mean, just to answer that point, the officers have done the presentation. And from my understanding of also reading the report, there's no detrimental impact on the decouverting or the plots or anything else. So I'm a bit, sorry, you can't come in. It's, I've got to allow the 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 members. So that's the bit, I'm not clear on 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 the concerns. Regarding the the briefings, I have been at a number of briefings where we've been briefed. I mean, I've been off hill for the last three weeks, so I've no idea what's happened there. But we have been regularly briefed on the projects. But from what I'm understanding, we're just asking two buildings to be brought into that red line. I don't really have a problem with that. But I'll go through councillor Hurst and I've got councillor Kubo. Then I've got councillor Ove and then Pugh.
Thank you, Chair. I I just want to to probe a little bit more into this because can you explain to me, can you set the process out why the decision was taken to accelerate two buildings? What that actually means and what implications there will be for the development of the rest of this concept plan with the existing resources? Will any of it fail? Will any of it have to attract resources from elsewhere to be achieved? Is there anything that we're doing that is is against the the principles that we we, the outlined principles that we approved? And, you know, why the the decision's been taken at this time? Really, it's just asking for the decision, the recommendation to accelerate, to be unpicked so that we can understand actually what it means.
Before you answer, councillor Kubo, can you chair while I nip to the
Yes.
So so you're on next.
Yeah, so I I'm happy to answer that. I mean, I think the first thing to say is that the decouverting work is still going ahead, that there is still exactly as it was before and is still very much central and part of the plan, as is the castle remains, as is the public park. So those elements are still happening as set out in the original love bid. What the recommendation is asking for is to accelerate two development plots, two buildings. And the reason for that is that those buildings are And the reason for that is that those buildings are in a poor state of repair. And they are actually detracting from the activity that we'll do on the Castle site. So, the intention is to bring those forward quickly so that we can start to address some of the issues in the Castle site. The challenge that we've got and one of the biggest risks that we've got with this programme and with others and actually across the industry in general, is that construction price inflation is causing a massive pressure on budgets in general. And therefore, we have some very ambitious plans for Castle Gate, which are going to take a number of years to develop. The love funding for us is a real windfall, really. It's enabling us to accelerate some of that work. As councillor Sangar said, there's been proposals in place for Castle Gate for a number of years. We haven't had the funding in order to bring them forward. This gives us an opportunity to do that. We are looking at bringing forward funding from elsewhere, from the MCA and elsewhere, to deliver all of the work that we want to do here. But that might not be delivered in the timescale of the levelling up fund because the levelling up fund timescales are really tight. So, in answer to your question, there is no detriment to the other, the concept plan, if you like, delivery of the concept plan and what was set out in the original love scheme. So, the decouverting will still go ahead, exposing the castle remains will still go ahead, the public park will still go ahead. The intention is to accelerate repair of those buildings because they are actually acting as a bit of a detractor for the remainder of the Castle site. So, we could end up with a situation when we have a lovely public park and a number of identified development plots, but two buildings that are detracting from the rest of what will become a beautiful public realm, public park.
Thank you for that, Tammy. Again, it's accelerate. Was the repair, was the refurbishment of those two buildings that you are now referring to always included within the cost threshold and the delivery proposals for the Castle Gate concept plan? Or is money being diverted from that scheme to pay for this refurbishment? I acknowledge your point that we can do all this work and then have two unattractive, possibly dangerous, possibly detrimental buildings on site. But is money going to be teamed and labelled to do this? Or are additional monies going to come in to achieve this that will not affect the delivery of the concept plan?
There's no impact on the public realm, the decouverting works or the castle remains works from bringing forward those two buildings. The money is coming from the development plots that was already identified in the original love scheme. So, there was an amount of money set aside for development plots. There was an amount of money set aside for the public realm concept plan castle works decouverting. Those two budgets are still exactly the same. They're not being diverted. Our request in the report is to bring forward these two buildings as the first development plots in all. You can see there's one, two, three, four, five, six development plots on there. The development plots have always been part of the funding. They were in the original bids. They weren't identified.
Sorry, I'm going to, I've asked you once. I'm asking the second time. You've got to let the officer speak. I've gave you an opportunity. Happy to have a conversation with you outside the meeting. It's important that the members, because we're running out of time, got 15 minutes. Got 15 minutes, I'm going to ask that we extend by another 15 minutes. I want to be finished for quarter, sorry, half an hour.
Can we extend by another half an hour?
Yeah, yeah.
Shall we finish by one o'clock?
One o'clock. Brilliant. Thanks for that. So, we've had questions from councillor Hurst. As councillor Kubo, now, if you'd like to go next. What will do, Tammy and Alan, if we take the questions all together and then if you respond?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. My understanding is that the Andalus community is in one of those buildings. And now, what are the plans for that? Do they have to move out if you're taking over the building or are they going to be allowed to stay in that building?
To answer that, is like, we don't know yet. We need to talk about that with the Andalus Community Centre. But the future of the Andalus Community Centre is something that we want to absolutely ensure. So, if we can do the work to the building, the Andalus Community Centre stay where they are, that's fine. But it might be that they have to decant and come back or it might be that we find them somewhere new to be on Castle Gate site. This is a conversation I had early this week with the Andalus Community Centre and we need further conversations about it. But we are clear that we aren't getting rid of the Andalus Community Centre.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Earlier on, our lovely Chair said nobody's been kicked out of any building. I can assure you of that. Can you just confirm that commitment, please?
I will confirm it with a slight caveat that for the works to take place, if that means that they have to move out for a period of time to move back or can be rehomed, that's what we will do. But the activity won't be extinguished.
And when you say a period of time for the works to be completed, what? I appreciate you can't give an exact amount. Are we looking at six months? Are we looking at six years? Are we looking at 600 years?
And I'll give you an example from my own ward. We've been waiting for a licence now for two years. There is a capacity issue within the officer call. I mean, if you have a look at the, let me just rewind back a bit. I think there's been a bit of, there's a capacity issue within the council itself. I mean, there's only a small team of people in Tammy's team and we've gone out to recruit as well. The bit I think, if we had capacity, we would have communicated better, had more meetings. It's quite a complex project. It's got three component parts to it. Now, the officers gave a commitment and we've gave a commitment as an authority because we're all part of the authority. Nobody's going to be kicked out of any building. The council doesn't operate in that way. I can't give an example in 16 years where we've, if I use the word, turfed somebody out or evicted. That's just not happened. As I said earlier, when I was answering some of the questions, if a building is unsafe and we have a number of unsafe buildings. I mean, the Rose Garden is an example of where the council hasn't had the investment to put in. So, there are situations across the sitter where buildings need huge investment. And we haven't kicked anybody out. If there was something regarding health and safety that made it unsafe for somebody, I'd expect the officers to go in and either take people out of there or make that building safe. That's the responsibility of the council. Now, from my understanding, and I'll say it again because Mr Ahmed is here, we are not kicking anybody out. This is not what the recommendation is proposing. The recommendation is proposing to bring two buildings in that we can look at as part of this wider regeneration work that we're doing. And I don't really see a problem in that. I agree with what councillor Sangar is saying about briefings. And again, from my understanding, we've had a number of briefings. I know councillor Sangar wasn't at one, but myself and councillor Kubo were at one where we had a presentation to the partnership and the partners. So, any questions councillor Ruff?
Yes, I do, yeah. So, you said if it had to decant. Could you give me assurances that if it was to decant and move elsewhere for a period of time, that would be to a similar space and in a similar area, not to be pushed out, for example, out to Mosborough because that would be completely infeasible?
Yeah, completely. We are completely aware of how important the location of Andalus in Castle Gate is and we want that activity in Castle Gate. So, in terms of having to decant, we've been looking to try and do that within the Castle Gate site area.
Thank you for confirming that. So, as a follow-up, has a building been offered to S1 art space as of this moment in time?
There's been no formal offer to anybody at this moment in time.
Thank you. No further questions.
Councillor Pugh?
Thank you. Yeah, I think the first thing to say is, in terms of the overall nature of the two schemes, what strikes me is that, you know, the overall ambition and the scale of those schemes, they are really, really impressive. In my previous career, I worked in regeneration. And Atcliffe in particular was always a really tough one to crack. So, it's really good to see that progressing. But the issue about the ambition and the sort of grandeur of the schemes, particularly the sort of illustrative photos and imagery that we've seen in relation to Castle Gate and the things that we've also heard at committee today and that we're all aware of in terms of like the global economic situation and inflation, the increased cost of buildings and the threat that that has to schemes, you know, between conception and implementation. I have some real doubts about the implication here of bringing forward investment into a different part of the scheme. In terms of the logic on this scheme of moving, you know, potentially making refurbishment of existing buildings the first port of call in terms of spending the money and leaving the development of new buildings on current brownfield sites and the development of the public works to later. What that says to me is that if there is a squeeze on the budget and we run out of money later on, it's the public works and the development of new buildings that will suffer from that. And I'm not sure. I mean, I may have just misunderstood. But when the public documentation for the scheme was released, I read it with great interest. I don't think I need to declare an interest, but I will anyway because Freewhat is my favourite Ethiopian restaurant in the city. So, I go there quite regularly. And so, when the scheme came out, I was particularly keen to look at what was indicated on the plan for that building in the market tavern because the two of them are quite, you know, heritage buildings. They're quite, you know, distinct buildings of real kind of heritage interest and need to be protected. And I don't remember seeing them indicated on the plan at all as being within the auspices of this scheme. I had read and I'd seen the visuals that we've got on the screen there and I'd understood it that that the scheme on the left-hand side where it's near to where it's numbered seven, the scheme at the front where the little white arrow of the cursor is and the scheme next to where the restaurant is, that are coloured grey, were new build sites that were part of this scheme. And I didn't see any reference to investment from this pot in the existing buildings in the scheme. Which makes sense because actually what we've seen from things like Heart of the City, the Peace Gardens, et cetera, when you use public money to regenerate public realm and the things that the private sector doesn't want to touch because there's no return, then what you see is inward investment follows on into, you know, refurbishment of existing buildings. So, I'm a bit confused by this and I'm not entirely sure I'm buying what's on offer. Particularly, these aren't vacant buildings. There's a business in one. There's the community association. We've had Mr Ahmed from Andalus Community Association here, who's clearly not feeling that it's been consulted. And to me, it feels like putting the cart before the horse for the change in the proposal to come to the policy committee before the community occupants of the building are satisfied with what the arrangements might be. So, I'm sceptical on this one, Chair. Thank you.
If you want to come back.
Can I try to explain this? That you're absolutely right that when the first bid went in, those two buildings were not included in the red line outline for the site. When the bid went in, there was then an amount of money dedicated to bringing forward those development plots. That is not to create buildings. That is to make them capable of being developed at a later date is what that money is for. What we're asking for here is permission to approach D Look to include those two buildings within the red line in order to make them good and capable of future development, removing the issues associated with them which might threaten their future. And to use those outputs like we would have used the outputs for the other development plots and to leave the delivery of those other development plots to be dealt with in a different manner later on because we might not be able to deliver that within the timescale of the love bid.
Another way, what would happen if they weren't included?
They wouldn't get repaired and they would continue to be an eyesore in that area. We would then have to look at whether we can accelerate the infrastructure that goes into the development plots that are there. As Alan said, those grey areas are not to create buildings with the love funding, it's to put in the infrastructure. We think that there is other funding available that we can do that with and that's why that we propose this as a solution. But if the committee aren't, it's committee decision.
Thank you for that. Councillor Shaw?
Thank you, Chair. I mean, I share the concerns that, you know, many around the, you know, committee have shared. We're basically not having enough information about this and being able to understand the risk. Lot of recommendation D might have on other parts of the project or the development plots. Whether we know how much money is required or whether we're signing a blank cheque, that might put, you know, those other development plots at risk where they could.
We don't sign blank cheques.
Well, that's my answer. So, I'd be hesitant to support the because I feel we're almost being bounced into that situation. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, that's more of a comment. Councillor Ruff, you wanted to come back?
Yeah, sorry, just a quick question for Alan. When you say you're making good the buildings, are you agreeing that the existing uses detract from the area?
Absolutely not. One of the buildings is in a real poor state of repair and needs quite a lot of work to it. Another building on the site needs work differently to ensure that any occupation of it could continue in any form, no matter who that is.
Okay. So, just, that's fine. Thank you.
Councillor Plaid?
Just, recommendation D, isn't it there because of the change of circumstances in the Part Two report? Or are you telling us it's absolutely there on its own merits? And it's a revision to what we've been told all along throughout this entire process, which I've been involved with it as long as councillor Sangar from the point of view as a member. And the priority was opening up the site, how we were going to do it, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. It seems to me that if you now have got different letter priorities, and I know you're saying it's just from that wedge of money, but from everything else that we know about how these things pan out, if you prioritise that wedge of money and you run out of that wedge of money, you've got to get something else to give. And we don't want, I think, I don't want that 1999 vision and intention to get put further back than it has been for the last 23 years. That's it. None of that. That's what I don't want.
This is about, we have a set amount of money to deliver a certain number of outputs. Those outputs relate to decouverting of the sheaf, creation of the public realm, interpretation heritage asset and the creation of development plots. All we are asking for here is to use the money that's delivered that final output to be diverted from initially identified plots to two different plots. There is no threat to the other bits of the programme other than cost inflation. But we still have to deliver the outputs. We can't choose not to deliver one of the outputs.
There's no change in priority. There's no change to the scheme. What we're asking is that those two development plots are brought in. That's all.
I've got councillor Kubo. Sorry, go on.
To bring them in, you're saying to the department you want a modification?
No, we're asking a modification in the red line boundary. So, the red line boundary at the moment excluded those two buildings. We're asking for those two buildings to be brought within the red line boundary.
But you seem to be asking for a bit more than that in recommendation D.
I don't think it is. But go on, sorry. Have you finished councillor?
Yes.
Councillor Kubo?
I'm just aware that there is an element of this.
I'm just aware that there is an element of this that we're not allowed to discuss in public. I just wonder before we make any decisions, do we need to discuss that? Yeah, so we won't be making any decisions until, that's fine.
councillor Ralph, you were next. councillor Pugh?
Thank you. I'm just glad that we heard the clarity just before that the the two buildings weren't in the original because otherwise I was questioning whether I, you know, had my faculties because I definitely read it that they weren't when it came out. Because it's interesting because I heard I heard councillor Hurst asking that question a couple of times earlier and the answers were, the the answer, I got the impression from the answers that that they were because I wrote down they were in the what's in the original and I've got three ticks because I heard that being said three times and maybe I've misinterpreted that. It worries me where we've got one of the occupants of one of the buildings here who's not satisfied and we're describing that we can meet our the outputs from the funding by bringing this forward, by developing the building as a development plot. If we're refurbishing it so it can be used by the existing occupants, it doesn't seem to me to be released as a development plot. So I I just feel that we don't have the we don't have the 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 level of detail and technical information about the nature of this change to be able to adequately make it unless it's in unless things, you know, come to light in the in the closed item that cast a different cast a different light on on this. I mean, I think that, you know, personally, I would I would, you know, want to push forward on the realisation of the rest of the plots and the development of those other sites so that they can come into to use as development sites with other funding, whether that's public or private sector investment. But I think the best thing for the community organisation and the restaurant would be to get that area as thriving as it can be by levering in the the best impact that we can get from the public funding that's available so that there's more passing trade, there's more people that, you know, visiting, making the businesses thrive so that they can so that they can refurbish the buildings and make the repairs themselves if they're able to. Again, I don't know what position they're in because we haven't had that detail. So I think we'd I would need to have that detail, I think, to be able to make a decision properly. Thank you.
I can understand that on on the buildings. I mean, for for me, I don't know why we didn't include them. I've been down there, if you look at one of them, I'm surprised somebody's in there. They they do need repairing. No, 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 I'm not gonna. For me, it seems like a number of members are not really sure on what is being proposed. I mean, because I've been close to the project, I mean, the bit that we've we've made it very, very clear, we are not compromising on anything. What we are doing is bringing two buildings forward as part of this so they can lever in the resources that are required. We have a a number of buildings across the city. I mean, I'd love to have this project in my ward, I'd love to include Starworks in their Donal Education Centre because it needs over a million pounds spending on it and we just don't have the resources. Here we have an opportunity to bring two buildings back into good quality. So councillor Cooper, do you want to go, did you want to mention something in the second element of the report?
Well, I think we I think before we make a decision, we need to discuss that because, I mean, I I'm noticing on page 13, you know, part of the original, and this is what we're going round and round and all going...
So if I if I just stop you because I'm conscious of time, so if we can ask members of the public to to leave and... Yeah.
Sorry, just a quick question for you, Chair. As a member of the allegedly collaborative partnership that already knows the figures in that, would it be all right if I sat in to ensure that there's no further obfuscation?
Sorry.
Okay, so we have to leave now?
Yeah, yeah, please, well, you can you can come back in.
In fact, they are proposing to reduce the de-coveting, to not de-covet this section. These two were not involved. And Andrews has offered to spend money on this but has not been able to because they have a monthly voting lease, so they can't put serious investment into them.
Excuse me, I've been very polite to you, I've asked you to leave so we can get on with the... You can have a word with, when we finish the meeting at one o'clock, you're more than welcome to speak to any member of the politicians. If you can leave, please.
I will leave, but I feel the obfuscation needed to be pointed out and there are several elements to it.
Can you please? Thank you.
We're still on live feed, by the way.
We're on live feed.
A comfort break, the, sorry, a comfort break.
We're going to move to Parkview, but we don't, it's the... Player? No, players, 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 let's let's try and get this over with, don't we? Yeah, so, thank you for leaving and thank you for coming back. Can I ask members that we agree to extend the meeting for a further half an hour? Agreed, thank you.
Sorry, Chair, could I have to go once we've had the vote?
Yeah, yeah, no, I think councillor Hurst has got to go as well, thank you for that. So we've had a a discussion, there's a a proposal for members of the public that when we get on to the recommendations, which is on page two, what we're going to do is agree to A, B, C. There's an amendment which councillor Pugh is gonna mention and then there's another amendment from councillor Sangal which we're going to take. But what we're going to do is items D and E are going to be deferred. So we're going to organise an urgency meeting to look at items D and E. Number of members have asked for further briefing, so that's what is a way forward. Hopefully that makes sense, so. Over to councillor Pugh with his amendment.
Thanks, Chair. So if we are going to if we're going to take, make agreement to defer item D and E, what I'm suggesting is that we also approve that officers seek clarification in agreement in principle from the department for levelling up as to whether they would approve the relocation of the element of the project to the Castle site subject to committee then approving it at a following at a subsequent meeting.
Thank you. And thank you for seconding that. councillor Cooper, can we have your hands in the spot? Bro.
Yeah, sorry, I know, we worded it in like what you just said. So so requests that the Castle Gate Members Working Group is reconvened and that the first meeting is before the 20th of the of of December this year to 2022.
councillor Hurst has seconded that. Your hands? So back to the the report itself, so we're taking those two recommendations, recommendations A, B and C. If you could vote for that, colleagues, before you leave. Thank you ever so much for that. That's it for Tammy and Alan, Alan, thank you for that. Can I just, sorry, I didn't want to, to the members of the public, sorry, I didn't mean to come off stroppy there because we have a timescale, it's important, we we get through business and because we give you an opportunity for Q and A, this is where members, but the the bits that you were concerned about have been deferred for a further two weeks. But regarding Mr Ahmed, we've we've given a commitment that we're going to come and see as well within them two weeks. Okay, thanks ever so much. Now going back on to the agenda, we've got Local Renewable Energy Fund, Mark. Thanks ever so much.
Thank you, Chair, I'll keep this, I'll keep this very brief and to the point, respond to questions. So this report is responding to the approval of the capital budget amendment of three and a half million, which is for installation of renewable energy and energy efficiency works on council owned buildings. The the fund is looking to be used on community hubs such as schools, libraries, community centres and other other council buildings, which are noted in the report. The fund is also intended to instigate supply chain, low carbon business and skills opportunities in the local economy, assess the feasibility of heat storage opportunities for the heat network and lever in additional grant funding. There are four recommendations which the report makes. One is to approve the proposed programme scope, which covers the buildings that I've or at least starting to explore those buildings that I've just referenced. The second is around approving the allocation of 33,000 as match funding contributions to two heat network delivery unit grant applications. So those two applications with Eon and Violia will, if successful, lever in an additional 200,000, so it's a a hopefully a successful way of trying to bring in additional funding to 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 deliver some of our net zero aspirations. And then alongside that, approve the use of funding for the allocation of any development costs required for the pilot of community energy on a council old building, which is part of the the programme as well, about looking to to develop community energy. And the fourth recommendation is to approve the principle that individual schemes within the programme can be directly submitted for financial approval within the capital approval process, given that the programme is likely to cover projects which cover across different rate, different parts of the organisation and obviously the complexity of those and the need to try and move those through in a in a speedy and efficient manner. I'll stop there for questions, obviously there's a lot more detail in the report itself, but hopefully you've you've seen that.
Thank you for that, Mark. Any questions, councillor Pugh? Comment, any questions? I have a I have a question, something I've mentioned before. For me, I I because it was something that before we moved into the governance committee, it was the Labour Budget Amendment that went through. One of the areas we wanted to support was the voluntary and community first sector. I know three and a half million pounds sounds like a lot, it only stretches so far. Is there potentially scope to just explore what opportunities this could also provide within the third sector?
So the the wording of the amendment that went to full council, a budget amendment, doesn't give that flexibility in that it's worded around being used on council buildings. However, there is a programme at the moment that's been looked at. I understand that some discussion was taken through to the finance committee around exploring the use of SPF of the Shared Prosperity Fund to actually use that as a programme for community and cultural buildings and organisations within those. I think the other thing, as you referred to, the three and a half million isn't a, you know, it sounds in one respect a reasonable amount of money and it is to start this programme. But I think that it's also a drop in the ocean compared to some of the work that we need to do that's been picked up in the other discussion around the resources that are required to take us to net zero and obviously across our estate, it's it's a relatively small sum. But there are also a number of community buildings that are owned by the council and will be eligible for this fund and that are leased to community groups. So they those buildings will be able to be included within the development of that programme. And as I say, alongside it, there is also this conversation around exploring the opportunity to use the SPF to develop a grant funding programme for cultural and community buildings.
Thank you for that, Mark. councillor Pugh?
Yes, thank you, I just wanted to just make a comment that I really welcome this coming forward, I think it's it's definitely an area that we should be pushing as as hard and as fast as we possibly can. At the minute, as other members might know, I'm representing the council on the UK 100 Climate Leadership Academy, so I've just come back from the second residential weekend of that and we we we've seen quite a lot of talk about the journeys that other local authorities have gone through on local energy generation. One of the key themes there was to to the need for scale and the importance of scale in order to potentially lever in private sector investment and to be to be investable from, you know, the big the big hitters. So I think I really support this and I look forward to working with officers to look at how we plot out on the roadmap the scale, the scalability of of schemes such as this. Thank you.
Yeah, mine is just a comment here really, I do welcome this report and I was just thinking if we're going to develop that building under the Luff funding, can we make sure it has solar on it? Could we use some of this to do that? Because these are the kind, we need to be thinking ahead, don't we, with everything that we do from now on, we need to be getting in there in the planning stage, so. So that would help community building because if it's if we do build it, it's a community use, so, yeah. But absolutely, I echo what Craig councillor Gamba Pugh said.
Thank you. Any more comments? No. Comment for me, I'd love to add a couple of zeros on to that, picking up councillor's, Pugh's remarks, I mean, we're in, you know, a month away really from 2023, so seven years this council's signed up to 2030 and, as I say, that money is probably could be spent a hundred times over just on the the council's assets across the city. It's a start and hopefully we can lever more resources into the city. So if you can pass our appreciation to to you, to yourself and and your team, thanks ever so much. So if we could approve the the recommendations? Bro. Thank you. Next item is Matt.
Thanks, Chair. So the next item is the Baiton traffic order approval or kind of report of the objections to which the recommendation is to approve. Members will know that this is part of our citywide approach to sign only 20 mile an hour zones. This is for the Baiton areas, the next one on the list. I'd also like to highlight the section of the report to members where we've got the future programme, we've updated that one within the report. So for awareness for for next committee, there'll be Deilans, Waterdough, Highfield, Baiton, sorry, Batemore and Norton Lees. In terms of this, in terms of this report itself, we've received eight responses, of which there were 12 formal objections, generally around the same things which we normally get. So, you know, the effect of the 20 mile an hour zones, signage and clutter, waste of money and things like that. We think there's a strong policy position to continue with this as well as the evidence which comes back. One thing which I would just say is that all the roads which we consulted on in the TRO have have been kind of agreeable through the through the police and through the speed surveys. So everything which we went out to consult on in terms of the roads which would be classified as 20 mile an hour have been included within this recommendation.
Thank you, Matt. Any questions or comments? Sorry, is that a question? Yeah, please go ahead, councillor.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, so I I welcome the report and the proposed 20 mile an hour zone. I also noted that the high number of responses in support versus objections and I'm aware of safety concerns residents have 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 raised about, you know, particularly around schools and things, so I'm sure that this will be very much welcomed by the by the local community.
Thank you, councillor Shaw. Can we approve that? Bro. Again, you, Matt?
Thanks, Chair, same again, so this is another 20 mile an hour objection report, this time for Burn Cross. Slightly different figures in terms of the responses, we had 136, of which we had 19 formal objections, again mainly around the same things as I just mentioned previously. But one of the big questions which came back was the exclusion of Chapel Road within the order. As you know, what we do with signed over 20, signed only 20 mile an hours, we have a speed threshold to ensure compliance that supports, that that kind of gets us the support from the from the police. So under the consultation period, they were identified that actually Chapel Road wouldn't be compliant and has not been made within the order. However, what I would say is something which did come through is the an advisory 20 around Eckersfield School on Exfield Road, so we'll be looking to pull that one in either as part of this scheme or certainly identified within our within our kind of budgets for future rollout of future schemes. So that's been identified positive because Exfield School has obviously many, many children, So, that's been identified positive because Eckersfield School has obviously many, many children which attend there, many pupils which also feed directly onto Eckersfield Road. Busy road as well. So, we feel that would be a positive contribution to the project. And when we go through the capital approval of the scheme, we'll be looking to draw down funding to deliver that element, that additional piece to the 20 mile an hour zone.
Thank you Matt. Councillor Sangal?
Well, yes Chair, just on that point, I really welcome that proposal. I mean, I just think whenever we get these 20 mile per hour, it was always 20 mile per hour except the main roads. And sometimes the way we built schools in this city, the main roads are, the schools are on the main road. So, I think it's really important that we find a way of including roads outside schools. So, I think in this case, really support the proposal in terms of, that was excellent word.
Thanks councillor Sangal. What I would also say is that we'll be looking to introduce it, it will be advisory. So, it's not, it's not a formally enforceable thing, but we'll put it up with the flashing lights and the school warning signs and all the other stuff, very similar to what the petition was talking about earlier today. So, I think it's an example of how we're proactively trying to, trying to do that.
And? Councillor Pugh?
Thank you. Yeah, just a question. What did, what happened with Chapel Road in the end in this scheme? Because I know when it was, when it was first published, some of us were making representations for it to be included. I can't make it out from the map.
Yeah, so councillor Pugh, that isn't included within the order. So, that would remain at 30 miles an hour.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so my comment, my comment was that I received many recommendations, representations from constituents, in my own personal opinion, being a ward council living in the area. There was a particular problem with speeding and traffic safety on Chapel Road. I think it's regrettable that it can't be included in this. I understand the rationale. However, you know, the pinch point through that entire estate is the traffic speeding on Chapel Road. So, I think it would be remiss of me to not reflect that, you know, those representations from my constituents at this committee. And secondary to that, I would just like to say, I'm using this opportunity because this is an issue about my ward that's at a committee that I happen to be on. But this reinforces my belief that these local schemes should be being discussed at the local area committees or other local forums, where I'm sure my other ward colleagues would also probably say more or less the same thing.
We support, I mean, you won't find anybody not agreeing with you. I mean, we would love to, I mean, hopefully, as we said earlier, part of the governance review, hopefully this work will be passed down to local area committees. Can I hope to take an opportunity to thank Matt and the team? Because we're seeing now regular 20 mile per hour zones, we've had the school streets. So, it seems like, you know, we are delivering our ambition to make the city a lot safer. That's the key bit. I'm sorry we couldn't get the 30 on Chapel, but it's something that we do need to look at. Because if speeding is an issue on there and safety is an issue, then it does need addressing. And I don't know if that's the road safety partnership that need to step in or probably them and South Yorkshire Police as well to support what the residents are requesting, safer streets. Matt?
Thanks Chair. What I would say councillor Pugh is that this is absolutely, we are absolutely aware of this. And as part of ongoing discussions around our budget setting for next year, I think we'll be bringing some answers to that back to the quad first of all. But also that would be then wrapped up within our proposal for the, for the TRC to consider. But that's one that we're absolutely aware of. In terms of the staff, thanks Chair for mentioning that. The officer which is doing this is doing an absolutely fantastic job. So, shouts out to her specifically.
Thanks Chair, afternoon everybody. First on this two items is the monitoring report. So, members will have seen quite a lot of this before, it's a year to date report. So, you'll obviously recognise some of the comments. So, I probably should have introduced myself, I'm Ryan Keyworth, I'm the Director of Finance and Commercial Services. My name badge has gone missing, never mind. The report shows the council overall with an 18.6 million pound overspend, which is a slight improvement on the previous month. The fundamental underlying reasons for the overspend are the same as previously reported. Specifically to this committee, again, a very similar report to last time. A small underspend for the year, the CAS income target that this committee did have is covered by a one off for this year and obviously we're dealing with that as part of the budget process. And the largest underlying reason for the, for the underspend is increased highways, works related income. Other areas of this committee's remit have very small variances one way or the other. So, nothing particularly to report as an exception Chair. Obviously happy to take any questions that members have on this or any other part of the budget monitoring report. Thank you.
Thank you Ryan. Any questions? Councillor Sangal?
Thanks Chair. And clearly the current overspend is, you know, is a corporate one, as you say. In terms of this, this committee, it's an underspend. Once we've removed the clean air, the clean air zone from implementation in this council year. But I note on page 122, you know, that operating spend assumed to be met from income forecast from the introduction of charging clean air zone remains a risk. So, so as I said, I think the question is, will this committee? I understand, we understand that this decision that was taken by the cooperative executive was that the implementation would now be the 27th of February. So, if we don't have full implementation on that date, what's, you know, and some of it is delayed until June, what is the cost implication for that? Is that, can we put a figure on that cost from that extra delay that we've just heard about?
Trying to think whether that has potential consequences for this committee? And I think the answer to that is no. If it is, it's a small number of tens of thousands, maybe a few hundred thousand. It's not measured in the millions. And I think what you're talking about is the difference between an implementation date of the scheme of the 27th of February or whenever it is the end of February and the full rollout of the effect of the scheme to hackney carriages or taxis actually and light goods vehicles, I think is that, is that the question? So, that three month, four month implementation period, if I can call it that, yeah. It'll have a minimal, if any, effect.
So, put a minimum of, a minimal effect, but a few thousands. And that, and that would be a matter for Wastin Street scene budget or the corporate budget or this committed? Because, you know, it was down as, by not implementing it this year, you know, it was originally down as 2.1 million. Clearly, if we didn't implement it by August next year, we'd be subject to judicial review and government intervention and all the rest. So, that's a very different matter. But that, that limited part of the delay to June, which were a few thousand pounds.
I did say a few tens, perhaps a few hundred.
Yeah, okay.
Just on that, if I could comment. If we'd gone live on the 1st of April this year, the infrastructure wasn't in. That's the key bit. So, it'd be interesting to understand where the 2.1 million would have come from. Probably some of it from permits and so forth. But the infrastructure isn't there, so the fines wouldn't have come in. The second point is, the 2.1 million is probably a conservative estimate. Looking at what other authorities are making, it's probably twofold, threefold. So, I think we've all said it goes live on the day suggested in February and there's some exemptions until June, July, which makes sense, gives the hackney carriages, the LGV vehicles an opportunity to transition. So, for me, we're now fulfilling our obligation. I mean, I've not been around for a few weeks. So, I hope from what I hear, the financial support for small businesses and taxi cabs has been agreed. So, it's, it's a positive step forward. So, no, we've all spoken, so I'm just going to leave it at that. Craig, did you want to comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that obviously, you know, we have to balance against the financial implications, the social and environmental implications. And I actually really welcome the balance that's been struck now between getting on with this, the clean air zone scheme, the overall kind of cost issue of that, but particularly in terms of the financial element. The financial packages that are being made available to, you know, independent traders and self-employed drivers of hackney carriages and light goods vehicles and minicabs is really impressive and that sort of strikes the balance. I think what we want to do as a council in balancing climate justice and social justice. So, I think we should be applauding that.
Thank you for that. So, if we can note the report and final item, you again, Ryan?
Thank you Chair. So, two part report, I'll try and keep as much of this in the public section as I can. This is in respect to the council's 23/4 budget. The Strategy and Resources Committee received a report about a month ago, which showed that about 60 million pounds of savings and income generation opportunities have been identified against a target of 80. So, a significant amount of work had been done clearly right across the organisation and the policy committees to do that. Work is still currently in progress with members to determine the political willingness to accept all of those savings. The report part, the confidential appendix to this report contains the list of savings relevant to this committee that's been approved, is probably too strong a word, willing to support by each of the political parties, so they're not politically contentious. And the committee is asked to endorse that list of savings as part of this. The Strategy and Resources Committee will receive a further report on the 5th of December, a week on Monday, setting out that list of savings that is ready for approval. It is possible that additional savings will arise between policy committee meetings and that strategy and resources meeting, although in this committee's specific case, I think that's unlikely. So, that's where we've got to. So, what I'm asking for Chair is for the committee to note the overall position, but specifically endorse the items in the confidential appendix. And if obviously members have questions about that appendix, we would need to close a meeting to members of the public. Thank you.
Thank you for that Ryan. Any questions?
It's just in general on the preparedness to implement the plans. We've really got to be ready to go or ready to go as soon as possible if needs be. And just a little bit on the clean air zone. Having got to where we've got to and I was satisfied with the explanation that was given about the delay. And we all have our own little things that we're concerned about. But these small sums of money, these small tens of thousands, we're at the point now where we can't have too many of these, oh, it's only a small sum. It would be better if we need small sums where we can make, make savings to try and balance the books, financially speaking. Thank you Chair.
You'll get, you'll get no pushback from me on your latter point councillor?
Well?
Just a quick clarification on CAS income. With the CAS income, the bit that we'll be discussing as a group, we can only spend revenue accumulated through CAS on the costs of implementing the scheme or other clean air measures. So, I wouldn't want members to think that that money could be used for other council services or used for any other kind of policy initiatives. It's got to be specifically about promoting clean air in the city.
In terms of the preparedness of the plans or to deliver the plans that you set out, absolutely. And we're actually doing, doing work now about how we mobilise the implementation process, the work that's going to be needed to deliver what will ultimately end up being 50 million pounds of savings. I'd have thought by the time we finish this, this budget process. We're starting wherever possible, early implementation of some of those plans. So, where, where we're able to release staff through voluntary severance or early retirement and so on, that process where it can be done is happening now, again, to get us ahead wherever we possibly can.
Further questions? Comments? Comment for me? I mean, as I said earlier, 13th year, it just gets worse. I mean, I understand Ryan's also leaving. I mean, I'd like to take an opportunity to thank you for everything that you do. It's a, I know I can be a bugger at times, but you know, the work you and your colleagues do to keep this council financially prudent, you know, you hear about councils up and down the country getting bankrupt or commissioners coming in, you know, it's credit down to you guys, you and your team. That keeps us in check and ensures that the council is also open, transparent and stays within its budget limits. So, thank you for your service more than anything else and best of luck in your new role. So, if we can note and endorse the budget proposals set out in appendix one. If I can get a show van, that'd be great. Brilliant. So, that's been approved. Final item, that was. Any other business? No, brilliant. Close of meeting, thank you ever so much. Thank you for your...